Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, Wednesday, February 23rd, 2020, at City Hall Council Chambers, 8:30 a.m. This time, we'd like to call Reverend Dr. Robert Baker, the rector from Christ Episcopal Church, to do our invocation. Please stand. Welcome.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Bradenton, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Mrs. Melton?
Do you not have any proclamations or presentations today?
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go to citizen comment on non-agenda items. Comments on the agenda items that if they're there will be accepted at that time. First, we have Rodney Jones. Mr. Jones, please come forward and you'll have, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Rodney Jones, 213 16th Avenue West. Just want to continue to encourage some equity and equality and justice within this chambers. Mayor Brown was greatly disappointed in your ability to lead the city during a time of crisis. We've got allegations of misconduct. We've got allegations of purging. You have failed to respond to those in any manner whatsoever, even to the point of ADA violations, where you continue to deny me access to due process. I put it in writing. I've requested over and over again for you to email me and communicate with me, and you have not, just as your predecessor has not. I have emailed the commissioner of police, used to be in the mayor, since 2016 and have never, ever gotten a response. I've requested meetings. I've asked you to communicate with me by email because it's better for me. I can't, I'm blind, brother. You know, I'm not making this up. And so I ask you to email stuff to me because it helps me organize my material. So I do, I help a lot of people. So I organize that way. You've denied me everything. It's an absolute disgrace. It's disrespectful to me as a good citizen in the city of Bradenton. I was the city of Bradenton's best partner in the Bradenton Police Department, and they'll tell you that bar none in the history of Manatee County. You disgraced my family, my family name. And I highly encourage your attorney to call me today because I'm filing a complaint. I've got Tawanna Johnson here that worked with ADA to let you know the magnitude of the violations that you've done. You're going to cripple this city. And you've destroyed your political career, not by me, but by your own behavior and your own conduct and your own racist demeanor toward black people. You're in trouble, my friend. You better find your way to God, and you better find it quick.
Thank you. Next on the comments, we have Tawanna Johnson. Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tawanna Johnson. Address is PO Box 155, Tallavas, Florida. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Jones making an ADA complaint. My job is, I do ADA transportation services, and that is a huge violation. As a public servant, as we all know, we take an oath to serve our people, no matter what, who they are or what they may be. But the oath is that we must serve everyone and serve everyone faithfully. And ADA violation is a huge violation. It also can cause the city dollars, millions of dollars for reporting a fraud of not, of violation or not providing the information that's requested. Whatever is available to any citizen has to be available to an ADA recipient. So you have to provide that information within reasonable time of requests being made. So if it was me, I would do what is right because I know our department has faced many of ADA complaints and had to do what was appropriate in order to resolve those issues.
Thank you. All right, we have, I believe, Nicole Gavin. Please come forward. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes for the record.
Nicole Gavin.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you get to the microphone so we can hear?
Nicole Gavin, PO Box 701, 17th Avenue West. I'm just here to tell my story. My name, Nicole Gavin. I lived at 1510 16th Street East for over 10 years. I'm a single parent of three and a grandmother. On September 3rd, 2020, a fire started in my house. A fire started in my back room due to a laptop plugged in the wall. Fire departments was called immediately when the fire started. When the firefighters got there, they were not dressed, putting on clothes in the middle of the street, and they went to a nearby fire hydrant, cut on the fire hydrant, and no water came out, which someone recorded and sent it to me. They then had to call several trucks from different depart, different districts. By the time they did that, I watched my house burn completely, losing everything I owned besides the clothes on me and my kids' back. Red Cross put us in a hotel for a week or two. Since, I've been paying for hotels since. My landlord didn't even try to contact me. I wouldn't wish this on anyone. The sad thing is, no one even tried to contact me. I say, I say this to, wait. I say, the city of Bradenton is responsible for me losing everything. If the fire hydrant was working, they could have at least saved some stuff in my house.
Thank you. Chief, can you do a little research, maybe get with her outside and find out some of the information? Thank you. Okay, we've got two more. Joseph Shaw. Please state your, please state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Shaw. Mayor, I wrote you personally about the situation that occurred at 211 Avenue. Supposedly a robbery had took place at Race Track. Me and my neighbors and guests were here in my yard. Police approached us for no apparent reason, draw guns. And, you know, it's, it's dark where I stay at. I couldn't, I probably wouldn't be here this morning talking to you guys if it weren't for my neighbors and my guests that was there. So I know you employ these guys, but they need a little bit of training on how to handle situations and what to do and what not to do. Because if I hadn't took my hands out of my pocket, who knows what would have happened? And I wasn't interfering with anybody's investigation, but to come to someone else's property and threaten them, what am I supposed to do? And I'm not saying that, you know, all police are wrong, but it needs to be checked from top to bottom. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mayor, you are proceeding that complaint, and the current act of investigation will depend into, there is body camera footage as well, so I'll let you know as well as that, and I'll let you know on this information.
Right, and I did forward that on, and just like all emails I get, I forward them to the appropriate station for that. All right, thank you. We have one more. It looks like Shavonda Griffin. Please come forward. And please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Mrs. Shavana Griffin, 2812 6th Avenue Drive, East Palmetto. I've written to you guys. Know you guys got all my emails, but I've yet to receive a response back about the issue and the problem that we have over in Bradenton Housing Authority. You guys say that we don't show up for the meetings. We read the last one, that was postponed. So we showed up in numbers, plan to keep showing up. But I want to ask the question this morning because, see, I said I'm a advocate for God's people, and I am. God sent Moses to tell the Pharaoh to let his people go and let him go free before he parted the Red Sea. And what the Pharaoh failed to realize with his hardened heart was that God was going to set his people free anyway. He was giving him a chance to soften his heart and understand the problem that was at hand and what he should be doing in the right mannerism. Mr. Brown, you're the mayor, and I look to you because you're the shepherd of the city. Now, God didn't appoint you as a shepherd, but the people did. I don't know who your father is that you serve, but I know who I serve. And you have a duty. So we expect for you to do the duty that you've been served to do. And for you not to reply back to anything, to respond back to anything, and for you to feel as if though it's okay for these young ladies to be treated in the way that they have been and the things that have been happening by an employee, we hold you accountable because you hold their lives in your hand, as well as anybody in the city of Bradenton because you're the shepherd. I came to tell you this morning that God is already watching, and he's waiting to see just what's going to take place. I have a message that when you leave here today, expect a phone call. And that phone call, you might not like the news. Mr. Sanders, I know that you're laughing behind closed doors. You sit on the board, and you're pretending to take an ear, but you're not really taking an ear. So you're going to be held accountable, and you will see the wrath first. So know that you've been warned. And as I say, God's people are at hand. So I suggest that the right thing be done for these people that are people, and that because of the housing situation that they're living in or having to go through at this point in time because they look for a hand up does not make them criminals. So they shouldn't be treated as dogs on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another comment. Okay. All right. Ellis Mitchell, Jr., please come forward. State your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Ellis Mitchell, Jr., 2002 9th Avenue East, Bradenton, Florida. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council members. Three minutes is not enough time for me to respond to some of the comments that may...
This is the citizen comment, three minutes. Thank you.
I'm going to provide a document for the city council and the mayor to read in response to Ms. Griffin.
He represents a whole housing group.
There is no 10-minute component in citizen comment.
I'm providing a document in response. I'm going to give it to the clerk. You guys can read it. If you have any comments or questions about it, feel free to contact me if I've already reached out to you before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comment? I have no other cards. At this time, we'll move forward to consent agenda. Consent. Mr. Perry, did you have something before we go to consent agenda?
Before we go to consent agenda, Mayor, I just think it's probably important to just put some comments into the record. I had the opportunity to review Ms. Griffin's emails, and there was definitely serious allegations, and I appreciate yourself and Mr. Sanders asking me to review it. I spoke with the city attorney regarding the designation of the Housing and Urban Development and what our authority was over them. And of course, they're a federal agency. I think there was a statement made about you have an employee. You were, no city officials or the city administrator has employees at the Federal Housing and Urban Development Authority. There are serious grievances. I looked at the photographs. I understand what Ms. Griffin was saying, and I think there's multiple folks involved. And so when I spoke with Mr. Rudacell, we took it very seriously. Mr. Rudacell had been involved with the prior administration at HUD and the like. And there's internal grievance procedures, basically, for these kinds of things through the Federal Housing and Urban Development Authority. Unfortunately, they're not at the dais of city council. I believe that HUD is having their annual meeting, where their Board of Directors will be there in early March. I would urge Ms. Griffin to certainly bring her grievances to that meeting. The extent of our participation in that is that we do appoint members to the Housing and Urban Development Board, which I think was dutifully appointed in this case. And in speaking with some of the councilors, we believe we have people that are engaged, that are accountable, that are interested in the betterment of the housing authority, both for the residents as well as the overall administration of it. So I just wanted to be very clear that the email did not fall on deaf ears, that elected officials took what I believe to be appropriate action and are taking appropriate action, and that really the gist of this, if there is grievances between tenants and landlord management, being Mr. Ellis, who's the executive director, that that needs to start really with the board that is the boss of Mr. Ellis, and ultimately, there's federal inspector generals and other offices that are basically established to vet those types of complaints. And that would be important to direct them to us because as far as the law is, that's a federal facility. It's like a military base or an airport or otherwise. It's preempted, where we don't have a lot of authority to go in there. If I walked in there as the city administrator, Mr. Ellis could say, get off my property, and it'd be completely within his powers and authority to do it. So I just think it's important, and I recognize that Ms. Griffin isn't concerned with the nuances of the, of the legalities and authorities of this because she's just a resident helping other residents there, and I really appreciate that for sure. But it has to go to the right people if we want to get some of these complaints resolved. Respectfully, it's good that Ms. Griffin came down, but we're probably not very powerful in regarding to be able to do things about it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Sanders?
I agree with everything you said, Mr. Perry. And Mr. Ellis, he and I have talked for a year and a half now, since I've been there, and I understand his situation very much. And he goes over these complaints at every board meeting. And I think the public is invited always, to my knowledge, and that any grievances should be addressed by the board, which actually supervises Mr. Mitchell so that if there's something that's inaccurate, they can correct the record, and then they can act upon it. Obviously, city council is not the place to do it, but we, I sit there at every meeting, and I monitor. And so that's all I'll say at this point because I think, I think the citizens, I agree. I'm not taking sides, but because I know there's always two sides to everything. And I've heard, you know, I read the comments and so forth, but I haven't heard the other side at any meeting that I've been to in the last year and a half. So I would invite you, and I think Mr. Ellis would agree, that he would invite you to present to the board if you have a particular issue with him as the executive director.
Thank you. And as I said, the emails do never or don't ever go unanswered. They are forwarded to the appropriate departments. A gentleman came up today about something that happened, and it's been sent to the police department. Sometimes I think it's a process that you have to let go through first to let the proper procedure go through so we don't taint the situation. So, you know, when things come up, every email that's been sent to me has been forwarded or answered by me, and if it's been forwarded to the appropriate department, they have answered the questions. So, and that's been happened a lot, and you'll see when it's the appropriate time, whether it's by email or by phone, if I receive a phone message from somebody that sent me an email, I sent, I called them and left a message and have not heard back. So, you know, I'm trying to communicate in the best way as well as letting some of the processes go through with the Bradenton Housing Authority. I believe this board, through my office, has appointed a couple of new members to that board in the last year that have hopefully started helping to hold accountable if there is things to be accountable, you know, and then again, let that process go through. This has been something in my 10 years up here, and I think other council members that have been here, there's things that sometimes you'd like to try to help out with, but it's not in our jurisdiction. So unfortunately, we can only do what we do. And I believe over the last year, as Mr. Sanders has said in the past, we have gotten some board members on there that now are maybe going to hold things accountable, but also to hold the citizens accountable. It's got to be a two-way street through the Bradenton Housing Authority both ways. If there's a problem, they fix it. If there's abuse, it needs to be fixed. So that's something that we all do. So thank you, Mr. Perry, for those comments, and Mr. Sanders.
I was trying to say that...
Ma'am, ma'am, this is, ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order. This is a business meeting, so. Chair will entertain a motion for consent agenda.
And PO Box...
Please, sir, please, sir. Sir, sir, you're out of order. You're out of order. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I'd like to pull, I approve the consent agenda, less, item B. I just want some clarification.
Okay, perfect. So we have a motion to approve consent agenda A, C, and D. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Sanders first. All right. Any further comment on that? All right. Start the voting in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Yes, sir. To pass unanimously, Mr. Roth.
Okay. So item B is the joint meeting with Manatee County Commission. I just wanted to get some clarification before we approve it that... So first off, I want to make sure, so we're going to have an agenda? I'd like to have an agenda on this that we're going to stick to?
Yes.
You know, I just want to make sure that when we go in there that everyone understands that we are an equal government, that basically we, we charge our citizens taxes and we provide services. In my opinion, we provide superior services. The rest of the county, and we also pay county taxes. Our county taxes are just about equal to our city taxes. We have our own reservoir. We have our own water treatment plants. We have our own sewage plant. We have our own solid waste. We have our own fire. We have our own police. You know, we basically provide everything that the county charges everyone else for, and we pay equal. So we're pretty much premium taxpayers for the county because the city, the city takes care of the, of all the needs. So I just want to make sure that when we're going in there that, you know, all I know of the county is what I've seen and read in the papers. I just want to make sure that we understand going in that we are an equal government. I want the meeting to be set up as such, and I want agendas.
Yes, it definitely will be, and the layout will be, like you said, we won't be in their chamber. We'll be up in the manatee room, where it'll be, everybody will be equal set up. You know, obviously, the mayor and chair will be leading it, and everybody else will be together. I mean, if you look here, if you read the explanation, it basically says, "City Council for the city of Bradenton to participate in a joint meeting with Manatee County Commission to discuss and plan matters of mutual interest." So it's going to be what we do. The county owns a lot of property in our city, and I'd like to know what their plans are before I see it in the paper. You know, some of it, so those will be the questions that we have and what's of mutual interest to make our city grow, which I think plays into some of our CIP plan. And there's, you know, as we know, streets and roads throughout our city are FDOT and county. So I want to know what their plans are sometime before and how, again, publicly, where no one gets accused of backroom deals because there is no backroom deals going on here.
Okay. Like I said, I just wanted to make sure that we're, my understanding of what I'm going into is, so...
Good, nope, that's perfect. So thank you for this question because that's important. So, Mr. Sanders, just...
I agree with Mr. Roth wholeheartedly, and I would like to see an agenda well in advance of this March 24th. I thought we was going to agree on that date, but that's, that date is fine with me. It's far enough out that I didn't have anything scheduled. But I'd like to have an agenda from, a full agenda and not ad hoc when we go in there to get away from specific items. And again, with, Mr. Roth is correct. I read a lot of things in the paper that may or may not be true, and people can say anything. I understand that, and sometimes in a political year, that's done frequently. But I don't like to read in the paper that the county government or any other government is telling the city what to do with their land or vice versa. I don't make comments for the county, what they should do. If I do, I do it privately with the commissioners and ask if they would look into it. But I don't make the front pages of paper that they're going to do certain things, and that has happened, which concerns me, and I think this council needs to have a policy that sets out that we, we get presented with these ideas from county government or any other government at the council meeting prior to it being a public forum in a newspaper or somebody coming up to me and saying, do you agree with this? As if I didn't even know it was county, he was doing it. So it looked like they took authority away from us. And I know at one of the first council of government meetings about a year ago, one of the commissioners asked for charter government. And for those of you who may not know what charter government is, but basically charter government takes away the authority of this city. And Mr. Callahan was there as administrator. He spoke against it, and everybody spoke against it, and it became quashed only because of multiple municipalities had voiced their opinion. And so, but that has came up again in another meeting, and so I, I'd hope that that wouldn't be on the agenda because that's something seriously, seriously that would be controversial. And so again, I want to see these items, items that we want. It seems, here's the problem I see, is that this is being directed by the county, not so much by the city. I think they have more wants from us than we do from them. They have all the money, and we seem to have, but we have the, like I said, the diamond in the rough that needs some polishing, and they, they want to, they want to have recognition for that. And I'm, I'm a little burly when it comes to allowing that to happen, and I'm hoping that my, my board and mayor support the city. Otherwise, we can hand it over to the government and have one of everything, you know. County, county manager, I mean, that's done. I've seen it in other communities where they have a county manager. Basically, the city is, is nothing more than figureheads, and they have, they lose control. They have one fire department, one police department, one of everything. So it does, there is a cost effectiveness to it. Sometimes it gets out of hand once it's, what's developed, what I've seen and witnessed in the past. So I don't want a conversation on abolishing city government for the benefit of county, and that's, like I said, we've mentioned multiple times... of, of county, and that's, like I said, we've mentioned multiple times, and I'd hope that we refrain from, uh, entertaining that at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders and Mr. Roth, and, um, the, it has not been driven by the county, it's been driven by, oh, I'm sorry, well, I just wanted to comment to that, but, um, it's been driven more by me talking with the chairman at this time, to come together, and more about our needs, and that's one of the things, I don't know where you're hearing other things from, unless it's just propaganda out there, but it's not. I mean, I haven't, I haven't heard that they wanna bring up charter government again. That's not on any agenda that we've talked about.
It was, it was, but in the record, it was council government.
That we wanna do charter government, but that was a year ago.
The county wanted to do charter government, and it, it became, it was like a firestorm for ten minutes of everybody saying, "No, you're not taking over my government."
Everybody, including me, and then I was, I led it at the end, and, and I sat right next to the county commissioner that said it, and, and basically said, you know, "It's not something that will happen under my watch", and this council all stood up, as well as other mayors and county commissioners, so I haven't heard that come back since that meeting, which was about a year ago, um, and I haven't heard that at all, so, that's not even on, our agenda is more about what we can do to improve downtown and work together, and that agenda will come out, but we had to, we had to set a meeting with the resolution, the way things are done, the county has their protocol, they have to do, Mr. Rudicell, then we have our protocol, it's not, we just can't say, "Let's have a meeting." This is a meeting about us, and how we improve our city and go forward, so those are the things that, that obviously, you know, I'm looking for as, as the mayor, and with this council coming up, and having our voice heard, which I don't think a lot of times it does, um, when we're just out there, one-offs. Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, um, I, I'm kinda glad, I, I had not really thought about some of these things, but I really have been looking at this, and any discussions I've had with the chair of the count, of the county commission, I, I feel like it's just more to facilitate a better relationship, because there are often times that we're, that we're working, and we could be more efficient if we worked together. I, I mean, I think it's good for us to be cautious, I, I have not heard a word about the charter government again, and I hope that doesn't come up, because I completely agree with you about that. But I think that there are definitely ways that we can improve, and we all stood there and looked at the transportation planning, and how some of that stuff was stopping right at the border, and so, maybe we could call that to attention more, and I just think, let's go in with good intentions, I mean, like you said, we're our own government, and I don't think we're gonna get steamrolled into anything. So, I think this is only, could go, I think us working together and having a good relationship with all the other governments can only improve things. I hope I'm right, but, you know, I appreciate y'all's comments.
Oh, anyone else?
I mean.
Mr. Sanders had it first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I would like to have a, an agenda and a date that's at least a week out from the March 24th. I'd like to have an agenda that's, that's finalized by the 17th, so that there's no surprises at this, uh, at this meeting, so, 'cause I don't wanna be discussing things that are non-agended.
Thank you very much, because that's, that was my goal in it, having the agenda. We wanna, and again, when Chairman Van Osterbridge and I talked about doing it with our city administrator and our county administrator, Dr. Hopes, is that we wanted to come up with some key items to try to start the discussions that would hopefully be a win-win for our city, and the county, but the county is our city, too, and a win-win without a lot of, uh, debate, you know, I mean, we wanna kinda listen, it's that first meeting, you always wanna have your first meeting, kinda listen, hear how things are going, and then move on from there. Mr. Perry, it looks like you had something, or did you?
No, sir.
I thought you were sitting up in there. But, um, so I agree with you, Mr. Sanders, on that, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure the county will facilitate the agenda from the standpoint of getting it to us, but they will not facilitate all that's on it.
Who would chair the, uh, uh, meeting?
Mr. Van, Chairman Van Osterbridge and myself. So, it'd be, the way it's gonna be, the way I envision it's gonna be set up, Mr. Perry, you can, we, we asked for it in the manatee room, we didn't ask for it on their dais, because nobody, everybody can sit, but that room, if you've ever been up there, I think it's like a U-shaped tables, so, you know, the front of the U shape would be where the mayor and the chairman are, and then down the sides, I don't know, I mean, I can ask them, but do you want all of us sitting on one side, and all of them on one side, or we wanna mix it up? It doesn't matter, I mean, I think the point's gonna be the same, we're gonna talk and go through the agenda, bring up some things, and then nothing will be voted on, obviously, we'll talk about things, and then each individual board will have to take it back and.
Will this be a daytime meeting, evening meeting?
It says in the, 1:30 on the 24th, it was in the agenda, yeah.
Okay, 1:30?
Yeah.
And the public's invited?
Public's invited, and we'll be on TV.
What if that room is not conducive to a lot of people, maybe ten, fifteen people? I've been in there, and it's.
Yeah, I think they have other means of streaming the meeting to other rooms, and.
Streaming, oh, and not, as a council, is the.
I know, they've had big meet, they've had big housing authority meetings in there, one time I had to sit down in their chamber and watch it, because it was full.
So, their, their, their chambers is, is scheduled for that day versus having it there? I don't know how you'd do it with.
Right. No, I think, I don't, they, they don't have any other meetings, 'cause they are the meetings, county commissioners, there's no other, from what I understand, but I'll confirm that. But they have the means, and it will be on TV, you know, the ME TV will be there doing it. Yep, it's all normal, sunshine meeting, put that one, so, thank you for the comments. Yes, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so, 'cause the, the conversation brought, and it's, it's good conversation, it just basically, 'cause we're approving it, so, like to know we're approving. Um, I, I know that when this started, um, I know Councilman Barnby and I were, were on the board when she was here before, just before me, when this is the, the, the council of governments came up at the aftermath of the first county attempt to have charter government, and this is what we decided was gonna happen, I think it was decided prior to me, but, um, and then, uh, and in concept, it was a great setup, because what was meeting at that time, uh, when I came on board, was just the municipalities and the county, that was it, and I thought that they were quite effective. And the next thing you know, the school board came in, and then, um, one of the commissioners decided to go after the fire districts, and then all of a sudden, they were all in, we had seven fire districts at the time, and then, you know, the airport authority, the colleges, and it just, it just got so weighted down, that I thought that we walked away from the mission was to, for, for municipalities' government, and the counties, it interacted same type of business. I mean, a school board is a government, but they have a different mission statement than we do, we, you know, so, we're, we're, we have similar governments that do similar services, that's, so, that's all, I, I, I think that the county, the commission, the council of governments walked away from this, so we're moving back towards it, I think it could be effective, I just wanted to make sure that all things are equal. I'm, I'm a big defender of home rule, including cities and counties.
Mrs. Barnby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a little different recollection of it, uh, as far as how the council on governments got started. It came out of the accord, which came out after the annexation of part of Pariaco Island, and the, our VIDA proposed development on Pariaco, and that is when they started talking about charter government, and so forth and so on, and Cliff Walters was very intimately involved in putting together individuals to work on the accord, and part of the agreement with the accord was to start having council of government meetings, but that's my recollection.
Thank you. And that's one of the, yeah, just wanna make a comment, Mr. Sanders, and I'll come to you. That's one of the reasons that I thought it was great, because when I got here in 2013, the council of governments was going, but there was really nothing on the agenda, as you would go, and even, there was a lot of city officials from all cities, and, that weren't going, so it kinda started to die out, there wasn't a lot of agenda items. So, if you remember back last year, we asked them to start letting the individual cities chair a meeting, instead of just the county always running it, 'cause that's the whole purpose of that. They were always just setting the agenda, doing that now, through pushing by some of us, that we were able to start where we rotate the chairs now of each meeting, we set the agendas of those meetings, and that was a good olive branch, I think, by all of us to reach out and say, "Do it." But, like, um, has been said here, you've got other government entities now on it, that, yeah, I like to hear things about the school board at times, I like to hear about the fire districts and all, but if we're having a, a situation between City of Bradenton and Manatee County, we'd like to meet with them, talk about it, and come up with some efficiencies. Obviously, we know there's different ways to do our fire, uh, suppression, our, our police, our garbage, or whatever we're talking about. If we can hear some things from them, not to take us over, but to hear and combat together, it may streamline services, may also save some of our citizens money, you know, because we're able now to work together. We know, as, uh, Mr. Perry says often, the jigsaw puzzle that we live in here, you know, is hard, and sometimes you could be in a corner that the city is three parts around you, but the county is on you. So, we've got to try to figure out how we can streamline some of these services. As Mr. McCollum knows, you know, there's a lot of places that have city, but they're county water. So, how do we figure that out? How do we work together in some of that, you know? So, services are important, but it is not about charter government, I'll say that point-blank, if I hear that, I will not be for bringing that up. And now, again, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Sanders, let's have an agenda, and we will stick to the agenda, and, you know, not really have thirteen people decide they wanna go off on a tangent somewhere individually, 'cause then it defeats the purpose of that meeting, you know, so I appreciate that. All right, uh, Mr. Sanders, did you have something?
Yeah, the council of governments was, Mr. Barnby is, is correct, it was because of the dispute over the annexation at Pariaco, and it was very contentious, and that's how the, the council of governments was actually formed, and then there was a chord between the county and, and the city on that, that lasted until, um, until I was elected. I went out to the council of governments meeting, and, uh, Ms. Whitmore was the chair at the time, and she was very surprised to see anyone from the City of Bradenton, and so I asked her later why, she says, "Well, nobody's ever been coming." And I said, "Well, here, here's, here's the reason, because they don't feel they have a voice. It's ran by the county, the agenda's set by the county, we don't discuss anything that we can do jointly, we can't prove anything we can do jointly, so it's kind of a waste of time, and that's why nobody shows up." And that's what the council told me in, in the first meetings of, of my tenure here. So, I, I said, "Look, we either, we either come together and, uh, discuss things that everybody has to do, like, uh, transportation, transportation involves all of us." I tried to set up a committee, I failed, I wasn't able to get that, but we did abolish the accord, because everything had been satisfied on it, so we abolished the accord in 2019, so that, that no longer exists. And I do like the rotation of the chairs, we do that with the MPO, with the counties, we got two counties, Bradenton and Sarasota, and then we got several cities, so we do rotate that between cities and counties, and back and forth, so it does, because the agenda's sometimes set by, uh, the, the chairman and the MPO, uh, director, and it, and that's, that's happened at the council of government. So, we have changing, and I noticed that now we're getting a lot of participation, and to me, the council of government should be of the government that has money to spend on roads, infrastructure, or something we can cooperate on, you know, not, not just pet projects that, that they like to see, but building, buildings, and that type of stuff, you know, for example, the county, uh, controls 27th Street, they control 43rd Street, they control 26th Street, right in the heart of our city, that we have a hard time cooperating with them and getting things done, and, uh, so we need to have commitments from them, that they will help us with these, uh, because of our crazy boundaries that we've got, the zigzags, that who owns what, and, and it even causes a problem with the fire department and police department, I've heard it numerous times, is, "Who's gotta go?" "Oh, it's your turn, I don't know." It, it, it's, it's, that, those things need to be probably, uh, issues that I'd like to speak about, not who's gonna build a building on a waterfront property, or that type of thing, so, and, and I know Mr. McClellan has a big problem with that, where do we, where do we, where do we go? Um, I see Mr. Galloway, he used to bring up the, the, the park out there, that, that county was doing things that we had no authority over, and, and, and so, we would have to go to them, but those are the types of things we need to be jointly, that affects both of us versus, uh, development, or anything like that. So, I'd, I'd rather see it geared to, you know, how, how the city and the county can work together to function, especially with traffic issues. And if you wanna a pre-trial or a pre-run, Holmes Beach on March 1st has a meeting between them and the county, uh, on March 1st, if you'd like to attend, or I, I intend on attending, to see how that goes, because they have a list already out there of wants and needs on the, on their, in their, uh, city government, and so, we might see how that, that goes, if you wanna attend that.
Thank you, and, and like I said, I totally agree with the way we're setting this up. In, um, 2013, I got on this council, and I attended the majority, if not, uh, all that they had of the council of government meetings, and it was, uh, like, you know, I had the same concerns as most people there, they were, most of them were getting canceled, because they didn't have any agenda items, and nobody was sending anything, 'cause the, outside the county didn't feel like things were engaged, and now, with the way things have gone over the last couple of years, um, we are engaged, 'cause we are helping chair and go through that, so, that was something that, that I, I do know that, that I had attended most of them, that they had, because, you know, all of a sudden, at noon on a day that we were gonna have the meeting, they'd cancel it. Uh, and I don't think before we started having them consistent again, I think three of the four, or more, were canceled, 'cause there was no agenda items, so, but, yep, I mean, everybody, Patrick, you remember getting those emails, and they were canceled?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. So, all right, thank you, Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate the history of how things have evolved into being equitable, so I find it, um, encouraging that the municipalities and the county are going to work more in tandem, and, as opposed to one entity trying to take over the other, or monopolize, so, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Uh, move to approve item B, Resolution 2210, joint meeting with Manatee County Commission.
Second. Do we have a time?
Yes, it's the 24th at 1:30.
Uh, and can, and, uh, discussion that, that we have, uh, uh, agenda seven days prior, and, uh, added to this, that's not in that resolution, I wanna make sure that that's, that when we're voting, we're voting on that, that, uh, agenda set before the meeting, so that we can, but I don't know how you do that, but it.
I don't think that was part of the motion, um.
We will.
Well, I would amend the motion to, to add a, a time certain for the agenda then, uh, seven days prior to the meeting. It, yeah, I have to get permission, I understand with the rules, uh, would you allow that, that time certain for the agenda?
Uh, amend the motion to approve, uh, uh.
To have the agenda seven days prior, that's fine, it doesn't matter, we'll have the agenda long before that, so.
Okay.
Yep. So, and the seconders, is okay with that, Ms. Coachman?
Second.
All right? So, let that reflect in the resolution?
Okay.
All right, start the vote in Ward Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Thank you, carries five to zero. All right, next, business advertising, petition hearings, and communications, anything on that?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
All right, no problem. All right, new to business by department heads? We have our CRA, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Perry. My name is Katerina Girakiosire, and I'm the CRA Executive Director, and I'm here in, uh, in front of you to, as part one of, uh, hopefully approvals, uh, to move forward with a land use restriction agreement between the city, the CRA, and HTG River View Six Limited. Um, River View Six will be a five-story, eighty-unit, new construction, a multifamily, uh, development, that will be located in downtown Bradenton, in the Bradenton CRA, and it will be leased for working individuals and families, it's not gonna be age restricted, and the individuals and families will be earning, it's gonna be truly affordable, and they'll be earning thirty, sixty, and up to seventy percent of the area median income. Um, just to give you a little bit, uh, understanding what that means, um, if we're looking at the 2021 income limits that have been set by the federal government for this year, the median income in Manatee County right now is seventy-seven thousand, two hundred, and if we look at fifty percent of that, uh, for one person making twenty-seven thousand, fifty dollars, two people would be making up to thirty thousand, nine hundred, and for a three-person household, up to thirty-four thousand, seven fifty, and that's up to fifty percent, so some of the renters would be making income even less than that, and some of them would be making a little bit more than that. Um, it will be, the, the development is proposed to be consisting of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, and. And before you, you have a proposed land use restriction agreement. I will go over some of the key items for your consideration. And Mr. Roudasal, if I miss, omit anything, please help me at it. From the city's commitment, the developer is coming forward to ask for a waiver of the impact fees that the city would charge them. And we have estimated those fees to be approximately 270, approximately $277,000. And that includes for parks, police, fire, roads, water, and sewer. The developer would still be responsible for all the other fees, such as the school board or the mosquito district. And they're also asking that the gap between, for them to be able to make the development and all the tax credits they're getting and loans is $800,000. So the ask from the CRA is to pay the remainder between the $800,000 and the impact fees that the city would commit to waive on their behalf. The other committee, the other commitment from the city would be that if something happens to the CRA in the next couple of years until that development is completed, if the CRA ceases to exist, then the city will take on that responsibility of approximately $550,000. So from the CRA perspective, as I mentioned, it will be in the form of a loan, estimated to be around $550,000. And we have a few clawbacks. So the construction has to begin before a first payment is made by the end of this fiscal year. The developer believes they're going to be starting by June. And when we talk about commencement of construction, it means pouring of the foundation. And also, once they achieve 90% of completion of the project, which has to happen, and occupancy has to happen before March 31st, 2024, otherwise the CRA and the city would take back whatever we've committed to the project. They're going to be required to submit an annual report to both the city and the CRA. The term of this agreement is for 15 years, following the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the project. And, um, and the reason for this request, and the developer is here, Ms. Delia Tabora, who's the Assistant Vice President of Development, is because between COVID, construction costs have gone up, labor shortages, and increase of labor. Additionally, they've had to purchase property that, due to the prices now in our area, it has skyrocketed. So it's, it's put a financial burden to this project. And that's why they're coming before the city and the CRA to ask for this amount of money. So, Ms. Delia, if you'd like... She has a quick presentation to give you, and we're both here for questions regarding this.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sanders. Do you have a question?
Yeah, the occupancy, March 21, 24, that is when the 15 years starts on the agreement for affordable housing. In other words, there's no, it starts then, not today.
I believe it's the certificate of occupancy is when we start, not from now.
March 39, they're obligated to, to keep this as affordable housing grant for 15 years from March 20, March of 24.
It will be affordable housing. And if some of the units go to the 80%, which is still considered workforce housing, and they have tax credit that extend past the 15 years, but for the purposes of this agreement, we said 15-year, it's going to be any combination between affordable and workforce housing.
Can we have a copy? I don't think it's in the package. It is, I'm sorry, of the impact fees that we're going to waive?
Sure.
And also the HUD?
The guidelines for this year?
Because that changes annually.
It does.
Will that change, will, will that, will that, does that commitment today? Or is that commitment on 2024?
It would be on whatever that annual...
Whatever that is on 2024.
However, had it just the yearly, then it would be the 30% of that income. It could go up, it could go down, stay the same, whatever it is.
This is the HUD schedule that we all refer to as the Affordable Housing Schedule based on income requirements.
That is correct.
This project will not be granted ad lorum, forgiveness of ad lorum tax. They will pay ad lorum tax on the value of the property.
It will not be. So you're correct, and if, thank you for pointing that out. So as soon as this is built, it will generate taxes that will go back to the city and the CRA and the county. So over time, we will recoup the money that we are committing.
Right. And the impact fees of $277,000 will come off of the $800,000. And so we'll be obligated, when is the $550,000 to be paid?
The proposal is to be broken in two portions. The first, it will be $150,000 this fiscal year, and it will be from the Bradenton CRA, as long as they begin the construction before the end of the fiscal year. And then the remainder will be next fiscal year.
2023?
Yes.
The 400,000?
Approximately. These are estimated, but we've double-checked with two, so it's going to be around in that arena. I would estimate between 250 and 300.
So we're admitting this from 400 to 800, which we already approved. I'm sorry?
It would be from about 275 to the 800.
Oh, 275 to the 800, okay.
That is broken down in the two payments, 150 and then the remainder.
Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to our representative from HTG? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Good morning again. Thank you for having me, and good to see you all. I, she did a great job kind of explaining the technicalities of it. So I'm really here to kind of give you an update now that we are approximately three to four months from when we expect to begin construction. Again, my name is Delia. I'm the developer with Housing Trust Group. On your screen, you'll see a couple of the developments that we have built here in Bradenton and Manatee County. Actually, the one in the county, Oakside Lakeside, we didn't have a chance last year to do a grand opening. So that's actually going to happen right now on March 17th. And we're really excited about, you know, that new property. They both look great, are holding up great. We are long-term managers also of all of our properties. So that's just something else to keep in mind if you can go to the next slide, please. So I have been talking to the CRA about this site pretty much since we founded. It's pretty well-located, just a block south of Manatee Avenue and about two blocks east of here. So it's, it's very central, which has gotten, you know, interest from the city, from staff, about really what we can bring there and what they want to see there. So if you can go to the next slide, please. This is some renderings that we have of what that corner of 6th Avenue and 9th Street West will be. Part of this very important corner. And what the city wanted to see again was some commercial space in there, which is not very typical for us to include with the affordable housing developments because of the funding. But we've worked with the city about where to kind of place it. And we've arrived at about almost 4,000 square feet of retail space on that corner to kind of maintain it, activate it, and maintain it as a commercial corridor. So that's what's going on that street. Next slide, please. Yep, so that's just some options of, we're starting, we're starting to do the leasing up and like marketing for that space. So hopefully, we get some interest from some small businesses that can benefit from that and take that space down there. This is another rendering. This is the view or the look from 6th Avenue. And next slide, if you can. Yep, this is just another one of the view from, again, 6th Avenue. So it's, as Katerina said, a five-story concrete building. The ground floor going from left on your screen to right. It's basically on the right-hand corner, a children's playground for the residents, as well as all of the residential amenity spaces. So the clubhouse and the fitness center are all on the ground floor. Again, to make sure that we were activating that ground floor and kind of abiding with what the city wanted to see there. And then all the way to the other corner, reaching that commercial space to the right-hand corner of that block. Next one, please. This is also something else that we have been discussing and we're pretty excited about that we hopefully are able to bring through this location and this project. I know that the CRA has been very active in trying to, you know, make more urban and arts programs that incorporate some public art. And so we want to make sure that through that kind of element in the playground in that, in that corner, that we can bring something interesting and something that will make this block and this new facade a little bit livelier. So that's something else that we have been discussing. And yeah, the last slide is more technical things, a little bit of what she was talking about. So what this request more or less encompasses is the impact fee waiver to be complemented with like a CRA grant initially, that is now being considered as a long-term loan. We had been speaking of the, of the grant from, from the beginning. And then we kind of spoke about the impact fee waivers and how those two could kind of complement each other so that the request could be a little bit less. As Katerina explained, we would still be taking care of school impact fees. There's also building permit fees and utility connection fees that we also are paying. And yeah, there's, there's some other costs. So basically, the remainder of that money, that's not the impact fee, that's, impact fees that are waived, like I said, would go basically to cover that, the commercial space, the actual hard costs of that, which are not covered by any of the funding that we obtained from the state, as well as some of those other costs and fees, and the very, very steep increase in construction costs that we have seen since this deal was submitted. So if you follow the timeline, we applied to Florida Housing, the state agency, in 2020. So all of the deals that were kind of submitted in there were using assumptions and underwriting assumptions from that time. And then, you know, as you know, 2020, 2021 came, and things have been going in a kind of roller coaster that's a little bit scary for us in the construction industry. We are expecting probably about 10% to 15% increase in those construction costs at a minimum. And so, yeah, this funding would really help bring all those elements that we're trying to keep in there. We also did not have any kind of requests from the city in terms of land or ad lorum taxes, which are some of the other ways that you guys usually help projects like these. The taxes usually helps in the operating site. Fortunately, this project can kind of sustain its own operations on a yearly basis. So really, where the help would be most beneficial is in the construction period in this case, which is why we kind of went this route. Yeah, other than that, I think she also mentioned it, but the land, the land assemblage was, was pretty tough to kind of get everyone on the same page. We initially didn't have site control of the entire block, but we got that. And that was pretty much like a $450,000 bust to get everyone happy and, and on board. We are, like I said, about three to four months away from financial closing, which is when we begin construction. And this request is basically to authorize the CRA to execute the LURA and as well as any other documents relating to this in that future date. So at the financial closing, which is expected late April to early May. And, and, and yeah, so this is kind of like an advanced authorization for that. And this is again, part one of, I guess, two approvals that this will have to go through. And yeah, if you guys have any questions for me, happy to answer.
I do have one that I want to ask. You made a statement that you're not getting any school impact fee credits. Why is that? Because I know that there's ways to do that in those projects, especially on affordable.
Right. So I was actually talking to Katerina about that. I guess I mean through this approval that you guys are not, I guess, authorizing that. Right, right.
But there is means that other...
I have reached out. I'm not sure if there's a complete waiver or just a reduction, but I have reached out to Manatee County, yeah, public schools.
And then my other question is, how often, and this is something I haven't seen on others, but I've seen other apartment complexes, and especially in this community, as soon as they're built, they resell. Do you resell them?
No, no. Like I said, we, we own our assets pretty much long-term, which is, does differentiate us from some of the competitors. Even at the year 15, when there's sometimes some like reshuffling of the, of the debt and things, we usually tend to just keep them as long-term assets. So we have in our portfolio currently more than like 30 properties around Florida that we own. We also manage them. Yeah.
Yeah, because you've seen some of our apartment complexes, again, they're different styles, but, but are selling for at least two to three times more than what they just finished a year ago for, which obviously brings a lot of money into our CRA when something builds for 20 and sells for 76.
Yeah.
And those properties are all in the CRA. So that's going to be something that will benefit the CRA in the next tax cycle. So questions, Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, two questions, and I may have missed this. Is this going to be stick-built or concrete block?
Concrete, yeah.
And how will you, we've seen, of course, you know, the increase in the costs to construct. We're seeing that and hearing that a lot. Is there anything you're going to do on your side to make sure that the, the additional help to cover those expenses is going to be enough to do it? So I mean, are you going to have arrangements with the supplies now rather than when you're actually going to need them? I mean, do you have a way to make sure that we're not going to be hearing in a year, oh, prices have gone up even more, we need more help? Because we have seen that. And I think certain builders have a way of compensating for that or arranging so that they buy it now. I don't know how it is, but I, I mean, can you address that at all?
Sure, yeah. And actually, to, just to give you a little bit more color on, on even the concrete construction. So in terms of the state and Florida Housing, you have to tell them whether you're building stick or concrete. We applied as concrete. There is an option, and we're looking into it because I'm not even sure if that's going to be more cost beneficial for us. But there's a type of hybrid construction where you basically do your entire ground floor and your whole shell of the building in concrete. And then the floors in between, so floors after the second floor are actually truss. We're looking into that as a potential option. But even that's, we're not sure, back, back two years ago, that for sure would have saved us a little bit. But now it might just be all concrete. So that's just a side note on that question that you had. And on the other end, on the second question, we fortunately go on our general contractors. Our contract with them is always guaranteed maximum price. So we're going to go bidding for this project in about a month, a month and a half. Once we get back those bids and sign that contract, there is no price escalation allowed in those contracts. That's very important. I, I think almost all affordable housing developers have to do it that way to actually avoid the problem that you're kind of saying. Because we really can't take any changes to our budget and our numbers once we close. Yeah.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here today. I see that the development's going to consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Can you give us a little further breakdown as to what that mix is going to be?
Yeah, so off the top of my head, I believe it's 16, 48, 16. So 16 one beds, 48 two beds, and 16 three beds. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have square footage? Can I just ask the square footages on those?
Um, it's about 600 square feet for the one beds, about 850 square feet for the two beds, and 1,050 to 1,100 for the three beds. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sanders?
Excellent project. You've, you're, I'm advocate for your group every time. This is exactly what we should be doing and doing more of. This is exactly what we should be doing and doing more of. You've come in here with a small ask from us. The smallest ask I've seen in four years, except for your other project that you just completed. I mean, the last time we had what was allegedly affordable housing, our CRA had to fund it for $3 million. And I'm opposed to those types of government money for apartments. If you want to bring hunter jobs into our city, I'd be glad to entertain it, but not just for apartments. So I appreciate what you've done. I know there's tax credits you get that others cannot get in market rate development. But this is a beautiful building. The ask is almost nominal to begin with. Keep building, keep coming back, keep buying more, ask us to help you. I met with the school board last week or week before about this, and you said you've already talked to them, but please insist on school board waiver of those fees. They're very hot on this right now, and I don't know if it's been before their board, but they had a special meeting that I was at and spoke in favor of. And I believe if you're not qualified, nobody is. So that's a lot of money. And I think that, you can tell them, I support you from the city standpoint, because we're going to be doing this with other projects in affordable housing, with planning and CRA too, because we're in a housing crisis with rent and purchase. It's almost impossible to live here anymore. So I'm going to be advocating real strong, whether you call it a political year or not, real strong for assistance to people for rent and purchase of homes with the help of the city versus helping the development community with overfunding them. So please continue what you're doing. I'm so impressed. I could sit here for the next 10 minutes, but I'd be repeating myself. So you got my support 100%.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and right now, honestly, with the construction cost and the rents that you're saying, it's even more important because for the market-rate developer, right, all of these increases, yes, they feel them, but at the end, they can kind of translate it into the rents, which is something that we really don't have the ability to do. And that's what we've been seeing throughout Florida, is the renters are the ones who get.
That's what's driving up rent. They build them, they sell them, they build them for 20 million, some for 76 million. Now you've got a real estate investment trust that owns them and has to increase the rent. Over next to my, I'm getting phone calls almost every day that the rent was $2,700 in the apartments right next to this park we're building, $2,700. It was, you know, elevated in the sea of river, but now it's going to 4,000. I said, I don't know how anybody would even pay that unless you just got more money than you need, but you wouldn't be calling me if you had that, right? And I said, there's nothing we can do about it. If I could, I'd put a moratorium on it, but call your state legislature. It's out of control in this area right now. And we need to do what we can with affordable housing, credits, whatever we can do, and we need to focus on that and expend all of our money in that category versus market rate. We're out of control in that. So that's my little speech. Call it political, whatever you want, but affordable housing is only affordable housing if you make the promise and act on it, not just say it.
Thank you. And I agree with the affordable housing we've been on here. We've done several things. And some of the questions I asked in the past with some of your company was because the information was coming out a little incorrect. And when it came down to what was done, was exactly the questions I asked. So I know there was some angst a few years ago, but it wasn't because I was against what you were doing. But I thought if you've ever lived in a stick-built building that's four stories tall, if you've ever lived on the second or third floor with the non-concrete floor, you get a lot of complaints. So I mean, that's what was coming up. And so I like that the other one was done in concrete block, which at the time, the representative said it wasn't going to be, and it was. So this being concrete block, I think, is very beneficial to all of us, because we hear some of the problems we deal with, some of the hood things that we don't even control.
Right.
And we've got to deal with them. So if we give a lot of money, and again, whether it's a little money or a lot of money, it's still a lot of money, and it still works into helping, and I'm very supportive of that in developing our community. And some of the other things, some of the other projects we've done over the years that I've been involved with, whether it's market rate or not, helps us have the money to give to you. So the market rates do then put more money in the CRA to hopefully give back more, which then gives back to the city. So there's beneficial everywhere you go, and I think that's what this city has done in all the years, you know, from boards before us, mayors before us, is look at what's the best aspect of growing the city from one left to right, not just one individual. But no, I think this is a great project. I think it really makes our city more walkable. You know, we're working on those type of things, which is going to be one of the things we talk about at our city-county meeting, about how we make our city more walkable with the county's help. Because if we don't, if we build you as an island there, those retail spaces aren't going to work. So we've got to figure out as a community how to keep those things going. And again, one of the goals is, from the city, to make Riverwalk east, down Riverwalk west, whatever we call it, down Main Street, all the other streets in between, all the way to LeCom, and as farther we go. So those are the things that I think this project starts that process, and hopefully will help clean up. It grows. When you clean one area, the next area, and I thought, you know, I was glad you said, I think this was something that if we didn't have that one property in the south middle corner of it, or middle of it, wasn't going to be, it'd been very difficult.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that everyone worked together, and I know Katerina did a great job at working to get that to happen. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we need a motion, I guess, is it the next step?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the land use restriction agreement by Mr. Sanders, second by Ms. Coker. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanted, it's been said before, but, you know, this is definitely, the need for housing, obtainable housing of any kind right now is probably our top priority. I just firsthand had an experience with my daughter and her family that moved back down to the hometown. They almost got squeezed out of the housing market. It's just ridiculous out there, and there's no end in sight. So I think this is one of our top priorities now, not only now, but in the future, you know. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Perry?
Mayor, I want to belabor a lot of the points that were made, which were excellent points, but, you know, I think this development is somewhat ambiotic about what's happening in this area. And really, there's never been a more important time probably in the history of Bradenton to really be strategic in planning the redevelopment of the city. We had three realtors in yesterday to the mayor's office that were asking about the vacation rental ordinance, that's what they actually came in for. But of course, the conversation swayed a little bit, and they pointed out a lot of the things that the DIAS was highlighting as far as the affordable housing crisis. And then we hear that the median income in Manatee County is $77,000, and you really can barely buy a house for $300,000 or $400,000. And that means an income, a joint income of probably somewhere on the order of $200,000. And so it's becoming a problem.
House needs a raise.
Right, right. We're kind of, you know, a problem of our own success, so to speak. And I was asking the realtors. I said, well, why? Why? And there was a multitude of reasons. But some of the things that really are attractive to Bradenton and what makes it kind of a renaissance is that we have water, we have services, we have quality of life, we have business, we have activities. And when you look at surrounding areas, whether it's North County or far out west and the like, I should say out east, they don't have all those things. And so I think that's why there's a focus on this urban redevelopment. And when you look at this particular project and specifically its location on Sixth Ave West and Ninth Street, that needs a facelift. It's a little rough down there. It's consistent with what I think you all have been trying to do, what we want to do in the future, what the mayor pointed out with connectivity, with what was pointed out about the domino effect of improving surrounding areas and the like. And I just think it's a wonderful project, that it has both residential and mixed-use commercial walkability potential. The ask itself is fairly minimal. I'm thinking about the MAC, the Maximum Allowed建设, that Dilia and HDG has to make work for their pro forma numbers to work. This is probably a $20 to $30 million project, is what I'm assuming, on construction costs with the land. The ask for Usken is in the area of, as we talked about, a loan for 500 today. I think we have a couple other components in there. But it's fairly minimal to seed this project. And the objectives and goals that it accomplishes are very wide and broad. So, you know, I fully support it, both as a matter of today's policy considerations, but also the future and what it can do for the strategies. And we probably need to look further, deeper, real soon, at what the goals and objectives are for the city, quite honestly, in regarding redevelopment. So I've said enough, but I appreciate Dilia coming in. She's been good to work with, she's been a straight shooter. And construction costs have gone crazy. And that's why Counselor Roth and myself had had to get a piece of property here not too long ago, said, what's going on? I never knew it was that expensive around here, and it is.
Thank you. All right, now we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
And five.
Yes.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Carries five to zero. All right, moving forward, Mr. McCollum.
Mayor, if I could just do a quick introduction on this matter.
Sure.
Yep. So Mr. McCollum is here on a package that's before council, which is Resolution 22-9, which considers modifications to the recycle and yard waste collection program. Council, remember that we visited this subject, I think, a couple months back, and its kind of genesis was the problems we were having overall last summer into the fall with solid waste collection across the board, and specifically this resolution, which deals with two specific programs of the overall solid waste program, which is basically recycling and yard waste. Jim has developed a data package and has information for you to consider some of the policy changes that are being recommended and suggested. And I have had conversations with the counselors on particularly one issue regarding yard waste that I think we probably need to talk a little bit about. So with that, I turn it over to Mrs. McCollum.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Jim McCollum, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Again, as Mr. Perry mentioned, we are here to talk about this resolution that proposes essentially a move away from curbside collection of recycle to centralize, if you will, convenient centers to be located throughout the city. We're proposing 10 of those to start with, as something that could be expandable as we move forward if we need to. But I wanted to give you some information related to recycling and where we're at and what's going on. So as near as I can tell, I've gone back through the records, can't find exactly what date we started recycling, but it was sometime in the 80s that we started recycling. And over the years, we've recycled in a variety of different formats. There was a period of time when we were actually processing recycling in the solid waste yard, so we were double-handling all the materials. And there was a solid waste study in 2009 that was performed that recommended we move away from that, which we did. And most recently, we've gone to single-stream recycling. So basically, the methodology for recycling has changed over the years multiple times. And the recycled materials themselves have historically been somewhat of a revenue source. Back in 1997, I think, the number was about $66,000 a year was generated from sale of recycled materials. Now, that never fully covered the cost of the recycled division in solid waste. But I want to make it clear, the city has never had a standalone fee associated with recycle that we have charged to the citizens. It has always been part of the overall number and has been somewhat, if you will, subsidized by some of the other divisions that pay for the overall operations of solid waste. So what are those costs from recycle? This is the last four, five years of recycle costs. Current year budgeted is on the left. The gray bar represents the overall cost associated with the division, which is roughly $835,000. You see a spike in 2020 when we purchased trucks. There was a significant investment in trucks at that time. But essentially, it's been around $800,000, a little more than $800,000 a year associated with that. Now, in terms of what we've been able to get from the recycled materials, 2014 and 2015, the blue is co-mingled plastics, glasses, and everything. The orange is resin fiber paper, thin cardboard, and the gray bar is thicker cardboard or larger cardboard boxes. And you can see that we were on the positive side up through 2018. In fact, there was a major spike in cardboard price back in 2017 that provided a significant source of revenue back into our solid waste fund. Then 2019 came, and we are now in the negative. We are now paying 75 bucks a ton, no matter what it is, for that material to be handled at a recycling facility. While we weren't making a lot of money before, we're now paying a lot of money now to do the same thing. So what's that impact of the commodity loss? In 2018, just before that switch, it cost us about $20,000 a year to dispose of material. That jumped to $110,000 the following year when we went to single stream. And we currently budget right around $200,000 a year annually in the recycle budget for the cost of materials going to the recycle facility. So that's a big increase. For reference, tipping charges. Our solid waste, when we take it to Leno Road landfill, that's an actual photo from Leno Road landfill, 40 bucks a ton. Again, for us to take it to the recycle facility, and that's what it looks like at a recycle facility, 75 bucks a ton. In addition, our contract with the recycle facility includes an allowance for them to charge us a surcharge if what we bring to them is contaminated. And to a certain extent, we benefit from it looking like that, because what happens is our truck pulls in, dumps, right behind us, a truck from Sarasota may come in and dump, or a truck from Manatee County may come in and dump, and it's almost impossible for them to determine whose is what. So we haven't been hit by that additional charge, which is essentially an additional 40 bucks a ton for them to take that material to the Leno Road landfill. That contract says we can have up to 20% contamination in a load taken to the facility for them to process it. If it's greater than 20%, they have the right to charge us that surcharge of an additional 40 bucks a ton. The reality is somewhere between 50% to 60% of the loads that go to the recycle facility go to the landfill anyways. And more specifically, glass, glass recycle, 100% of the facility that we go to, 100% of the glass that goes to that facility is sent to the landfill to be used as interim daily cover material at the landfill, and they get about 12 bucks a ton for that material. So there's an illusion of recycle. You've all seen the Florida Trend article that talks about it. It's probably one of the most thoughtfully written articles, tells a hard truth for folks. Our situation is compounded by the manpower issues that we continue to have. Shortages are drivers. Solid waste as a whole has 51 budgeted positions. Residential, which includes yard waste, has 30 positions. We currently have 11 openings. We have two people in the pipeline, so we're hopeful, okay? But still, that's a significant percentage. Commercial has 14 positions, one opening. Recycling has seven positions and one opening. The long and the short of it is we're down 13 people, and it makes it hard for us to do both yard waste and recycle. There isn't some mass of people sitting there that is waiting to use. And interestingly enough, Brian Cho called me last night, our solid waste superintendent, on the way home, to tell me he had just was sitting there at home watching the news, and Channel 8, I believe, had a story that Polk County had just recently renegotiated its contract with its hauler to do exactly what we've been doing. with its hauler to do exactly what we've been doing, which is off week recycle, off week yard waste alternating. That's the only way that they could produce enough manpower to serve the county. So again, our recycle division, it includes seven people and essentially four trucks. If we go away from curbside recycling, we take those resources and apply them directly to yard waste, because we have heard from the people, yard waste is their priority other than garbage. Garbage is our first priority, and we will always put as many people as we need to on collection of garbage in order to make sure that we pick that material up. So we are proposing that we reallocate our resources to yard waste collections, and the resolution instituted yard collection in what we call the three Bs. And I found this perfect picture of the three Bs, where we would repurpose our recycle blue bins to be used for yard waste. It'd be bagged or it'd be bundled. That can be picked up. I took this picture, it's directly across the street from me. I live out in Mill Creek in east Manatee County, and Manatee County requires bundling. And here's a home right across the street that lines it all up, bundled, tied for easier collection versus what we see. And I got all kinds of these. And these are all just from this week, and it's a recycle week. Trees cut down. Here's my personal favorite. This is the new game. Find the chair.
Circle it.
That's what we deal with. A whole tree cut down, property cleared, another tree cut down. Give us a chance to pick it up. Give us a means to approach it and collect that material. So again, our approach is to go to centralized recycle with containers such as these, that be individual, one unit, these are ten cubic yard units. This is the actual unit that we would be buying. It comes with a lock bar across the top to prevent people from going in and rummaging through it. It has a slot for cardboard and a door for dumping of the combined materials. And we're considering putting them at ten locations. We're still finalizing that. The ordinance, excuse me, the resolution speaks of that we would go away from curbside recycling by the end of April, which gives us about ten weeks to finalize all this. Part of that is in relation to getting delivery of these containers that have been ordered, okay? So, in some cases, we're proposing to replace the locations where we've got yard waste containers out with these containers. We're looking at putting in them at each of the fire stations for easy and safe disposal. And we're trying to also look at locations where we know there is heavy recycle that is done by people, so that we can try and coordinate that. So I'll answer any questions you have, but that's the general approach that we have. I hope I provided you some information that helps.
Could you, what was the slide I wanted to see again? First of all, I think it's important that we share that we've never had a separate recycling fee. This was something that the citizens wanted to see us do. We started doing it, and I remember when we got the little green tubs in the eighties. But when we go to the recycling in containers, I do know that Ironwood and Pine Brook does a lot of recycling, and I think it might be incumbent upon us to reach out to them to say, "Is there a centralized place there that we could look at?" Because that is, it's a huge population center, and I know that they have been overflowing when they've gone, when we had to go to the every two weeks.
And our general approach, at least initially as we were looking at locations, would be making sure that we were putting them on public property, so any discussion of those could be handled with individual communities as well.
Mr. McCollum, can you address what you and this council has done as far as trying to, the incentives that we've set into place as far as hiring individuals, as well as trying to match what other for-profit entities are doing?
Sure. Well, initially, the council graciously approved a CDL bonus. We'll call it a retention bonus, if you will, basically for somebody to come onboard. Individuals that were with us for over five years, I think, is what our number was, were given a two thousand dollar bonus as a thank you for staying with us. People below that were given a thousand dollars initially, and at the end of any probationary period, we're given the second half of that two thousand dollar bonus. And that is offered to new hires coming in as well. Secondly, most recently, the council approved the increase in the hourly rate across the board for the Ashmead members of the solid waste division of two dollars and seventy-four cents an hour. And it has had an impact. I mean, up until recently, we hadn't had anybody in the pipeline. So, we're seeing interest in us again, so that is helping. But essentially, we've always had openings in solid waste. We have thirteen openings now. Our goal would be to get to seven, six or seven, where we would be at a functional level to be able to provide what we consider our standard of service.
Could you also go back to some of the yard waste pictures that we've seen? Having gone out myself several times, as I know that the mayor and his wife has, and I know that you and your wife have gone out on your Saturdays, and I see my trash buddy from utility billing is here as well. One of the issues we have is people doing the illegal dumping of yard waste in our community when they're supposed to be having it removed by the person doing the work. Can we talk a little bit about that and what our efforts have been, as well as, I mean, I can tell you, there's been times that we pulled up to a trash pile. Had it been appropriately bundled, we would have picked it up and been gone. Instead, it's taking us fifteen and twenty minutes to try to get all of this stuff picked up and put into the trailer or the truck.
Yeah, you know, as part of the previous resolution on solid waste that was passed, we included language in there to indicate that, basically, if you cut it, you own it. So if a facility, you hire somebody to do the work in your yard, they own it. It's their responsibility to take it away. And so, our Clean City Coordinator is driving the city on a regular basis, making contact with some of these people and letting them know that that is how we are going to be enforcing it moving forward, and letting people know, when you hire somebody, they are responsible for taking it away.
Ms. Barnaby, not to interrupt you, but if you look at this picture, it looks like they're gentleman in the left is a service, and they're putting it by the road. And again, I don't know if that's city property or what, but you see that happening a lot. And again, there's some virtual piles that we've seen over the last several months that are almost impossible to pick up by an individual, you know? And you try to, then we have to deploy the claw truck and all of that. So, and again, if, you know, you look at some bigger stumps than that or trunks, there's times that there is no way the homeowner moved that stump from where it was in the backyard to the front yard.
Well, my personal favorite, I was driving around last week looking for some things to take pictures of, knowing I would be presenting to you, and I saw two locations where people had placed an entire palm tree, thirty-foot trunk, not cut, just laying out at the curb. Come get it.
You ever lifted a palm tree? If you've lifted a palm tree, you know it's virtually impossible.
Mayor, if I could just interject and draw some attention, I think the operatives section of this particular resolution is one, Section One, it's going to be under Sub B, which is yard waste, and the three categories about I, one, two, and three, basically. And we're proposing the three Bs, but there has been discussion about the last one being bundled. You look at some of these photographs, and obviously, they're not in compliance for multitude of reasons. The issue comes down to the bundling, and we look at it to say that this community has become accustomed to a superior service of yard waste pickup, and it's good that we have in a lot of ways. It's just that there are a number of abusers of that, and these photographs are probably depict of the more egregious type abuses and the like. We also have to consider that the Clean City component that we implemented about six months ago with the onboarding of Mr. Mora, and he's been very active. I spoke with him in length Friday night. You know that you and Mr. Mora and I used to work together in Albuquerque, and he serviced three hundred thousand accounts, I think. But he gets out in the street, he's good with people. He's focused a lot of attention, particularly on the east side, near river area, Counselor Sanders, with bulk waste, a lot of the bulk waste items of putting up. And he gave me really good feedback to the extent of, we revised the bulk waste ordinance, we're basically reduced the rates to ten dollars, and he goes out and says, you know, "We'll pick this up for ten dollars, but you have to call the number." And really, virtually, it's, there's a lot of compliance, I'm told. After he has the conversations with people, they kind of didn't know, and a lot of cases like that, and there's the more egregious types of violators that he has to basically say, you know, "We could come and find, and this could be a pretty expensive undertaking for you." And some people give a little pushback, and James has a little convincing persuasion going on, and, you know, hopefully, things get taken care of. I have been told by a few people, and I think Mr. Sanders and I had some conversations about it, it's looking a little bit better out there, with the bulk waste at least. Now, these types of piles, you could apply the same type of enforcement to, to a certain extent, as relates to the egregious violators. There also has to be public awareness, obviously. We like the three Bs, because we could put a four-by-eight vinyl on the side of those big, heavy sixty thousand pound trucks that say, "Remember, four Bs. Blue bin, because we're getting out of the recycle hopefully, and we have now receptacle." You put a vinyl sticker on that. Yard waste only, so that people isn't putting the other stuff in there. The bagged, the second component that's in the ordinance, the resolution under Section B. And it's the third one regarding bundling that is somewhat problematic. There's a couple of different schools of thought. I start, my points about, we do kind of pride ourselves on our superior service that's provided, and then the other school of thought, the counter school of thought, is more, why don't we handle it from an enforcement perspective? Because there is a lot of growth in Florida, particularly during growth season and the like, and we're open to suggestions, including perhaps a mending language that would include things like recommending bundling or something like that. So I just want to point out that there has been some differences of opinion that are well-founded, good, legitimate policy, robust opinions on this issue, and I think that's probably the gravamen, the gist of what our discussion will hone down to.
So, Mr. Perry, when you ask about the bundling, and I mean, I've been back and forth on that over all the years, but with the last couple of months of going out and seeing kind of some of the things that have been done, and virtually impossible for the homeowner to move those piles to the road, you know, I mean, it's, again, there's a lot of us that do that, and Jim knows over the years where I've lived, in that we've done some of that, but we did it ourselves as the homeowners. We didn't hire a company to do it and then haul, you know, put it out. But are you saying that if, in this policy resolution, if we put one of these piles out, if it's the homeowner, and we call and say, "Hey, this pile needs to be picked up," it will still be picked up for ten dollars, and there's no bundling? Or, okay, that's what I want, that got a little confusing.
The ten dollars is the bulk guidance.
So that's not yard waste?
Yard waste is basically charged on cubic feet, per se, and it depends on whether it's residential, commercial, or the like, and that's in some of the other sections of it. And so, you know, excessive yard waste, basically, yard waste piles consisting of tree stumps, large branches over six feet, this is under subsection C, in length, or three inches in diameter will require special collection by city boom trucks and be subject to a special collection charge of sixteen dollars eighty-six cents per cubic yard and three hundred and thirty-six dollars twenty cents per twenty cubic yard truck load collected. The problem becomes is that it's also time-consuming, and I think you have to be very mindful of the time constraints, because we have a limited resource. It's called man-hours. That's what our flow, our throughput capacity is. And if we had these things that are really taking a great deal of time, these piles, it would minimize our throughput capacity, because we will be, hopefully, redeploying our recycle assets to yard waste ultimately. But the charge is a little bit different. James would go off probably, maybe other folks, with a tape measure and say, "Mm-mm, nope, over six feet, doesn't fit in the free stuff, you're now going to get charged." And, you know, people would probably balk at first, and James would have to say, "Mr. McCollum and Mr. Cho, what do we do as far as enforcement?" And that enforcement could be either, if it's an egregious serial type violator that constantly has a pile, they probably would have a higher level of enforcement. Someone that just happened not to know, you know, I think we'd try to work with them.
Yeah, and that's why I asked that question, because I knew the answer to it, but I was, that got a little confusing, I think, for people watch this meeting. But one of the things that I think is, and I have a picture that I pulled up again, we all have seen those cactuses with the little round come off, they're really heavy, they got the spikes all over them. One of the residents we went to in Ward one, they had basically taken about, I don't know, a hundred of them, and just individually dumped them right there and expected us to pick it up. And, you know, again, if we had the bin, they would have hopefully put them in the bin. They obviously had to put them in a wheelbarrow or something to walk them out, then to dump them. And that was, you know, it was not only dangerous, because you can't hardly pick them up, and, you know, they wouldn't stick to a shovel, and, you know, it was interesting, it really opens your eyes when you're seeing that. So I can imagine what our guys see day to day. But, and I did some unscientific research, and some of my friends in the county and all of that, and they do not have, you don't see the piles as much around the county of yard debris, to get to some of these where they're almost dead, because they've been there a long time, because if somebody does cut theirs, they either bundle it, do it correctly with the county rules, and then if a tree service comes, there isn't that option maybe of abusing the system a little bit. So, but we still are going to have, if I do cut a tree down, I still will have the option of, if I can roll the stump to the road and get it there, there'll still be the option to call and maybe pay a small fee for it, but get it hauled off without bundling it. But the little stuff would be bundled, and if I can't cut the tree down, I can't bundle it either. So, but if somebody else cuts the tree down, they should bundle it when they cut it down or haul it off. So that's what we're kind of looking at, and that's why I said I've been back and forth both ways. But, yes, sir. Mr. Roth?
So you guys know where this story came from. I handed this to Mr. Perry, looking at it at six-twenty-nine, that's when we hired him. And I found this, and I was immediately looking, because I told him when we hired, that this is the biggest problem we've got, is this new, our new trash collection. And I was looking at this as a solution. I've known for years that our recycling operation is not going in the right direction. It's getting worse by the day, and I just see it as a wasted resource to go ahead and do what we do do. As Mr. McCollum said, you know, I spent twenty years as a private business in the green industry, in this area, in Bradenton proper, prior to the sixteen years of being elected a representative here. I know that the citizens, one of the things the citizens, our citizens love and brag about is that they can put their clippings out for the city and they'll pick them up. It's always been that way. It's just one of the things that we do very well. When I came up with the idea of... When I came up with the idea of getting rid of recycling, you know, I knew that there'd be kickback and all that stuff, but if it's a waste, and I know it is, I know that we're wasting time, we're wasting energy, we're wasting manpower, because at the end, a lot of this stuff's going straight to the landfill. And I know this just from walking around my own neighborhood. I painstakingly recycle proper, but I know my neighbors aren't, and I know that all that stuff's going to the dump. And that's just, it breaks my heart. So I will gladly haul it to a proper recycle center to make sure that it's being recycled. A waste of anything is a waste. A waste of manpower, a waste of trucks, a waste of rubber, a waste of engine wear and tear, and most importantly, a waste of carbon. These trucks are emitting diesel, and it's going into the air, so here we are trying to clean up the environment, and we're putting needless carbon into the air, and for nothing, because it sucks going to the dump anyway. So I just see this as a means to get to where we want to be. I don't want to see us take away from the citizens something that they're entitled to, in my opinion. We've been doing this for years, and that's the yard waste, you know. Most of our people are, I've always said this, they're just good, honest, hard-working people, you know. Mom and dad go out and do some yard waste, or a little old lady goes out and clips her stuff and puts it on the curb, and it gets picked up. We've always done that, and I'd like to see that we continue doing that. There are gross violators out there. That's just, that's just all there is to it. They need to be dealt with. I've said that before on bulk items, but also on yard waste. Look, if you've got a, if you've got an oak tree laying on the curb, and there's not an oak stump nearby, guess what? They got hauled in. If you've got palm ponds on the curb, and there's no palm tree on the property, that all got hauled in. So we can deal with this, but I don't want to get this into a situation where, this is the one thing that we are, we do so well, that people really love, that we're taking something away that, you know, they're used to, because there's some bad apples out there, and we're dealing with, and we're dealing with the, trying to make this work. So I'm proposing that we back off on the, I know, I lived in a county before I bought my home in Bradenton. And I could tell you, Waste Management loved to come by and say, we're not picking that up. They would, I watched them go out there and mark, measure the bundles, you know, and just, you know, because their most profitable pickup is the one they don't do. And I don't want to see us getting into a situation where we're now copying the county's waste management theory of, you know, discouraging people from, you know, that we don't want to pick their stuff up. So I just think that we're doing a lot, we've thrown a lot of money at this, we've thrown a lot of resources at this, we've thrown a lot of time at this. I know that, you know, look, this is what we do. That's like complaining about, you know, hey, a water main's broke, and we've got to get through all that dirt to get to it. It's part of the job. I just don't, I don't, I think we're going too far.
Well, I respectfully disagree that it's our job.
I know you do.
You know.
I know you do, Jim. But guess what? I set policy, and you perform policy.
Absolutely.
So we're allowed to disagree.
Absolutely.
But this board is the policymakers, not you.
Understood. And all we're asking for is for the citizens to give us a chance to pick it up. Give us a shot at being able to pick it up, not have to dig through a pile of reclinadas and thorns in arms in order to pick it up.
I said there's abusers out there.
There's many abusers.
There's, yeah.
I'm sorry. I agree. You have the right to write the policy.
Can I speak?
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Roth.
And we may end up needing to be here. We've been discussing this, as Councilor Roth said, for quite a while, and we've discussed quite a few times about educating everybody. And I'd like to know what has been done, because I get a lot of calls complaining about watching the collectors put the recycling into the regular truck, which would make me think they probably weren't doing it right. And so maybe, I mean, we talked about door hangers, we talked, I don't know, I feel like the education is going to be required regardless, even if we end up back with this ordinance like this. I feel like it's going to take education, because I think people are going to feel really like they lost an entitlement, and I, it just seems a little bit, I've also had some conversations with people that have moved from other places that have successful recycling, where they allow people in the community to take care of it, to get, you know, it's going to be a different kind of recycling program, but getting the plastic to the right person that makes playground surfaces, or, you know, I know that sounds like a lot, but I, it just seems counterintuitive to just load it all into the landfill still. And it may take education, and like I said, we may need to come back to being at this, but I just am very concerned about taking this all away from the citizens right now. I really do, and I agree, there are probably a lot of abusers. Some of it are abusers thinking, oh, the city picks up everything, and they need to be educated, again, with red tags, door tags. I know there's a lot of communities, especially in my ward, she brought up some in hers, that are going to be very upset about losing some of this. And I think we could go to HOA meetings. I'm happy to go into my community and educate them, if you give me the right information, because I can't say that I know everything. I didn't always wash out all my recycles until I knew about it, or pizza boxes and that kind of thing. So I think a lot of it's going to be about education, and to just jump to this without at least trying to educate people and get it better. I know, I know that right now, the situation is very difficult, and so I don't want to be, I want to be part of the solution, not part of your problem, but I'm just concerned about just taking it all away from our citizens right now. I think it's going to be really hard. They've kind of gotten adjusted to losing having it every week, and now we're going to totally take it away. And, I mean, I like the idea of the cans for the yard waste. I think that'll help people judge a little better what they can and can't get rid of, and charging them a fee. But once again, I think you've got some real violators, and the people that would behave or want to behave aren't being given an opportunity to.
Ms. Koker, are you talking about yard waste, or are you talking?
Both. I'm concerned about taking away the recycling, completely.
Because, again, we're not taking it away, we're coming up with an alternative method.
I think a lot of senior citizens will have a hard time if they're going to have to go drive it to something, you know, rather than just have the can down for them. That's just my feeling.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, again, having gone out to do yard waste pickup and have seen some of the things where we've had people that, you know that they paid someone to come, they paid a business to cut something down, and that business is required to haul it off. But they're saying, oh, I'm in the city, if you're in the city, the city will take it. I mean, there was at least three times, Mr. Williams and I came up on what was a complete oak tree taken down. And you know that the little lady we saw that waved to us and thanked us for picking it up was not the one that cut it and put it there. Mr. Mayor, I think you had a picture of somebody that had raked their front yard. They had oak trees, they raked their front yard, and they raked everything to the edge of the roadway.
It was in the gutter.
For our people to pick up leaves, rather than putting them in some sort of bin or in a garbage bag. And, I mean, we're trying to get as much picked up as we humanly possibly can, and if it's taking you 30 minutes at some place to get leaves that someone didn't put in the bag, we're not going to get to where we need to be.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, what have we done to tell the little old lady, you know, when you negotiated to do that, you need to negotiate that they remove it? That's what I'm saying. I think, I think our problem is, we all need to be educated, including myself, as far as both yard waste and as far as recycling.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could be heard, first off, I can tell you, you're going to have another summer like you had last summer if you don't change something. We don't have the capacity, we don't have the drivers, let's just go back to that 25% vacancy factor out of the 51 positions and 13 being on the sidelines. And so something has to be done. Number two, I don't disagree with Councilor Koker that we need to do a better job of outreach. Even if we were to change this, my staff doesn't do a very good marketing messaging campaign. We can do everything we want in here, but if it doesn't happen down on Main Street, or 9th Street, or 22nd Street East, it doesn't matter. Right? I mean, they need to know it. But the reality, to think that if we were to educate, that we'll get, like, a significant amount of compliance, I think that's somewhat of a fiction, from a couple of different perspectives. Mora was in charge of recycling rollout, when we rolled out the program in Albuquerque back in, curbside, 2010, thereabouts, and we spent, like, TV commercials during the isotopes games, the Lobos games, in-game features. We did everything we could to educate the public, and we still got massive contamination. That's not because the little lady that wants to do it right isn't doing it right, it's because some people are slobs and don't care. It's that simple. And if you give them a bin, they don't care what they're putting in it, as long as it's not in their house in their garage. Got to be mindful of that, and I guess, aside from these anecdotal things that I might think, or someone else might think, you really got to look at the statistics, look at the data, and that vacancy factor. Look at what happened last summer. We have to get out of one business and concentrate on another, whether it's recycle, or yard waste, or whatnot, because we don't have the capacity. We're in a labor market with CDLs, and everything else, what Councilor Roth talked about, about the delirious impact of this with carbon, and with garbage on the streets, and our community looking like crap, and all the neighborhood calls we get, and the emails he has to answer, the time that takes, and everything else, that's the byproduct of not doing anything. And I'll leave it at that.
We may have the same byproduct from doing this, is all I'm going to say. So I hope the education is going to be out there. I think that a lot of people, it's going to be the different people, but there's going to be a lot of people, especially in my ward, I think, that are going to have a problem.
And I agree with that, and I do think that the messaging for the recycle has to be better. We have to look at those areas where it's most convenient, so that if people would travel to put it in there. My area too, Harbor Island, I mean, I ran down there, I think it was a couple mornings ago. I've never seen such neat recycling in my life. So when we do away with that, I'm going to get emails about why. I get it. Our neighborhood looks fine, and it does, but go to Councilor Sanders, go to Councilor Coachman's, go to some other places in the city, they don't look so good.
Mr. Sanders?
Okay. I moved here in 2010, about 12 years ago. I questioned, not very loudly, why the city was so freely picking up yard waste like we are. So I took advantage of it. I cut down every tree I could find in my yard, and I hauled it right to the front, and they picked it all up, and I said, that's saved me several hundred dollars. So I think anybody that gets a permit should be required to do that, number one, because you do have to get a permit to cut down certain trees, especially oak trees, I heard. So that commercial enterprise is getting a freebie from us, and it shouldn't be allowed. And I'm not saying if you've got a dead tree in your yard, you can't have somebody cut it down, but you got to place it out there, and you got to call Public Works and get it approved when you can pick it up at a selected time, so they can bring the boom truck over, and there is going to be a fee for it. So that's what I saw, that's what's in other communities. The bundling up sometimes is a problem, but you can save it and put it all out, and then call and ask for a truck to pick it up, and that requires an extra fee. But I think you can put most of it in this bin. And we're not going to charge more for that bin, are we? So basically, you're getting free pickup of your yard waste. Go put it in the bin. If it don't fit in the bin, cut it up. Make it easy for them to grab, throw in the truck. If it's more than that, I don't know, six foot, I don't think they need a tape measure out there measuring six foot, oh, it's 5'11", let's, just don't take it, whatever. You know, anything that's not bundled has to be picked up by a truck, because it requires more labor to do that. That's my personal opinion. Enforcement is going to be, enforcement and communications is going to be very important. This is not going to happen very quickly. So I'm in favor of the yard waste thing, and the recycling, we all know it's all going into the dump, because this is not 1995, and recycling is a, recycling is, it's just not happening. And we're paying an awful lot of money for this, for something that's just obviously going to the waste anyway.
And to be clear, if a municipality takes their recycle to a incinerator, that counts as recycle, according to the state?
So, I'm agreeing with this. I've got some notes here, listening to other people. Enforcement, nonbundle, a nonbundle fee is by a cubic yard. Okay, so you can bundle it, it's free. You don't have to bundle it, it's going to cost you. But, and then you got to schedule it.
Correct.
And I don't know that we're going to schedule it every week, maybe once a month, twice a month, I don't know. That's some operational things that you'd have to work out. Because you don't want to have a boom truck running around town every day, because now you have to have a driver in there all over the place. Maybe it's a certain time of month, maybe twice a month, I don't know.
Well, that boom truck is also traveling around the city collecting bulk items as well.
Bulk items as well?
Yes.
Okay. So they can pick up the bulk items with the limbs? No, you have to separate them, because when you take it to the dump, they have to...
Do them on different days.
Have to do them on different days. So I think you need to have that, those things scheduled. Here's the problem I see, that every time I go down the street, I see another dresser, another mattress, another this. Sometimes it's at the same house, and it's, man, they must buy a new mattress every week. You know, really? Like, and that's not the case. I know what the case is. Their friends have a mattress on the other side of town, or out of parish, or whatever, and they bring it over here and dump it out, and the city will take it, right? Absolutely. So, okay, fine, but we're going to pay, you're going to pay a fee for that. And, you know, and sometimes I think the driver would have to say, wait a minute, I think we just picked up a mattress here last week, you know, maybe a door tag, it says one mattress per month, whatever. That happens, and we had a guy come in here and said that he was going to the dump, and he saw a mattress. And he picked it up, and he took it, and he thought, I'm a good neighbor. He says, he comes back, and there was another one. He says, now, wait a minute. I'm, you know, we've got to address this. So those are the things that I think, that $10 is absolutely cheap. $10 to pick up a dresser, a mattress, whatever it is, is absolutely cheap. If you don't like that, then take it yourself, because you're going to have to have a pickup truck, you're going to have a dump fee. What's the dump fee for some, a mattress? Twenty bucks?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how much they...
Do you know, Brian? How much?
Twenty bucks. So you got your truck, your personal truck, or somebody else's truck, so you got it for 10 bucks. Guess what? That's good. Yeah, you got, you got a deal. You know, and I'll take my stuff out to the road, because I don't want to, I can't even get out there and bag it, $5 a gallon of gas, we have recognized that, so, and then I don't want to, you know, scratch my pretty face at putting that thing in there, whatever. So now, here, the commercial operations are profitable.
Yes.
I've heard you say that. Have we extended those, or we, or should we be, should we be offering that to more businesses, or are you already? We're below, we're below fees of Waste Pro and others, aren't we?
Any facility that comes in for, you know, development review, we talk about how their solid waste is going to be handled, and whether it's a dumpster, compactor, or whatever. And any of those facilities, whether it's Waste Pro, Waste Management, or Bob's Fly-by-Night Solid Waste Company, they all play a franchise free in order to be able to provide that service within the city of Bradenton, if somebody chooses to use them.
Okay. So you said this was about $800,000, $700,000 cost savings. Is that true?
Eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand is our budget for the recycle division.
Recycle division.
Correct. So that's the seven people and the four trucks and everything associated with them.
Okay, so by now, we're going to convert that to yard waste. So what's the true savings?
The true savings is probably a net wash, because you're applying the same people, you're still going to have recycle, so you're going to have material that you're going to pick up and collect and take to a facility for disposal.
Yeah, but you're doing that in... Yeah, but you're doing that anyway.
No, 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 I'm saying with the dumpsters, you're, you're-
No, 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 no. I mean, you're converting the green bins to now what I call in other communities-
The blue bins.
Brown bins, waste. So you've now, you don't have to pick up the green bins, you have to pick up the green bins, but now it's got waste in it versus recycle.
The blue bin.
The blue bin, the blue bin. I mean, whatever, so there, there has to be a net gain there by, we're only picking, we're not picking up recycling, except at those designated locations. So we are saving, you said eight hundred thousand, we are saving something, because-
I would say, you know, best case scenario, you'd be saving roughly half the cost of your disposal for the items. So if you were doing that, it's two hundred thousand, somewhere in that, no, we're budgeting two hundred thousand, so you'd save about eighty to a hundred thousand.
Well, you're not going to have to have that, as many trucks, are you, or are you requiring some-
Again, you have to have the trucks. The, the issue, the issue is manpower. Okay? So-
So I saw you had, you had seven there for recycling, and you already had some for yard waste, so isn't that-
No, no, that's, that's the misnomer you all have right now.
Same thing.
Brian starts the day, here's how many people I have. He first designates the people that he has for garbage and commercial pickup. Whatever's left is able to do yard waste and recycle. In a perfect world, you'd have enough to do both of them. We don't have a perfect world anymore. We have a set amount of people that are left over. It may be two people, we got ten trucks, but we got two people. Or it may be four people. When we have four people, and we can put the four trucks on the road, we can do a whiz-bang job of recycle and/or yard waste collection, but it's not always that case. So there isn't, there isn't some place where there are people who are not going to be doing something anymore, that are going to be doing something else now. We're just designating that, that's all they're going to do, instead of this other thing.
All right, so net save, there may be a net savings of, you think, hundred, two hundred thou- two hundred thousand dollars, something like that?
A hundred thousand would be the most, I would think.
Probably the most, okay. So how, how are we going to use that money?
It's going to be, it's going to be applied towards yard waste operations. So again, all we're doing is-
Public Works water raises?
They're enterprise funds, they're, so they can't be co-mangled.
But irrespective, the, the hundred thousand is covering overtime costs, because again, even with this, there, there's still not enough people just yet, until we get more drivers. So we're, we're burning overtime, that is just using up the budgeted money that we had for all of these thirteen positions. So the, the budget that's in there for salaries, health benefits, all of that, that's in a pot, we're using that to pay for the overtime for all these people who are, instead of working from six o'clock in the morning until three in the afternoon, they're working from six o'clock in the morning until six o'clock at night, or later sometimes, on a regular basis, and we're burning them out.
I understand, and that's why you have turnover, and, and nobody wants to do it, and that, blah, blah, blah. But we, we obviously saw what a pay raise will do. Pay raise gets performance. It always has, always will. And you gave them a two dollars and seventy-four cents an hour, and two thousand dollar bonus, and I guarantee you, money motivates. You know, and anybody that wants to argue that point with me, we'll see outside it later, after the meeting. But, so, I, I, I'm just, I'm always an advocate for that, because sometimes we don't understand our own problem, because we don't want to, we don't want to see it. You know, so I'm, I'm, I'm there. What? Oh. So I'm in favor.
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. I had some things to say, but it'll be belaboring what has already been said, and you just about touched on something that I just simply want to put out there. We are the friendly city. Our citizens are probably feeling, like you said, a little entitled, so changing these things, we're probably going to get a lot of pushback. But as I've said before, it's very important for us to be a friendly city to our citizens and our employees. It's a safety issue. Yes, making more money will motivate, but it's still not the only thing that we should focus on when we're talking about safety for our employees. So, that's it.
I agree, and one other point-
Ms. Barnaby has something to say.
Mr. McClellan, one of the things that I wanted to have touched on today was the conversation about recycled glass, and how they're now using it at the landfill as, as a weight, right? Because as you, you have looked into it, there is not a single facility in the state of Florida that will recycle glass. Is that correct?
That is what I have been told, yes.
So we can't recycle glass, we're having a hard time getting everything picked up, we're burning through staff, we have tried to work by increasing not only the hourly wage, we've done retention bonuses, we've done signing bonuses, we've done many of the things that a private industry would, would try to do, and we still are having significant issues.
And it's not just us.
Well, yes, let's be clear about that. It's not just us. I had a conversation with the gentleman in charge of Manatee County Recycling, and he's telling me that when the two contracts for Waste Pro and Waste Management come due, he expects to see some major changes in the services that the county will be looking at in those contracts. Some major changes.
I would suspect you'd see something very similar to what Polk County just did, that, you know, in order for their providers to be able to field the proper number of personnel, there have to be changes to the methodologies that things are picked up.
Ms. Barnaby?
And cost increases also, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, in the, just so that, so my mind, when you say it, in, in legislation, I don't know where it's at, it may be already dumped by now, but there is legislation that third-party vendors do not have to comply in hurricane emergencies. So if you've got the Waste Pro out there, they can say, I'm not doing it, you know, and I've got a law that protects me. Whereas if you've got your own people, we require them to do it. So I don't know where that's legislation, where it's been dropped or not, but it, it was there. I don't, I'm not following every piece of legislation, but that is one that would hurt us, or hurt us if we went to that third-party vendor.
Third-party, and I remember a time when we had hurricanes, that Mr. McClellan's group worked thirty-two days straight without a break to pick up garbage and yard debris that had come down in the hurricanes.
Mr. Roth? Yep, anyone else, Mr. Roth?
So here's the scenario. You got a little old lady who's got a royal palm. Royal palm for self-cleaning. The frond drops down. They're, they're usually not very heavy. Pick it up and drag it to the curb.
Have you-
Oh, boy.
I've, I've done this, guys. I, I-
I do it every day in my front yard.
So you can- So you can drag it out there. So now you've got a palm frond that's like, you know, four and, and twelve, you know, maybe sixteen feet long. That, that, the clam truck, or the, the compacters, you stick it in there, it crunches down, it goes in through. What's, what's going to happen with that?
My guess is that we would still pick up palm fronds. Individual palm fronds, the, for instance, the vast, the vast majority of palm fronds that are out there-
This is actually what I've been arguing about, is the majority of, I, I don't, I'm not opposed to most of what we're talking about here, but palm fronds create a issue, and they're part of our lifestyle. And, and, and you know what? We're very lucky to have these royal palms in our area, because they're, they're gorgeous, and they don't grow in Tampa.
And the majority of the palm fronds that are out there are in public right-of-ways, and they're our responsibilities anyway.
So, so we're, we're getting there. So this, this is what I'm concerned with, is I'm trying to protect the citizens, as we're trying to move forward and trying to make this function. You know, what, what are we doing, what are we doing well? What are we, what are we falling behind on? What, what is not working? And, you know, I've been analyzing recycling for a long time. It's, it's, it's not working. And I'm looking at the resource that we can use, the men, the trucks, the fuel, and do it into what we do do well, of, we pick up, this is Florida, we, we have beautiful lawns, we want them to be well-kept, we don't want unkept properties. So how do, so basically trying to, not that we're going to get a net gain, that we can continue doing something, you know, so I'm, I'm willing to go and, and bite the bullet on getting rid of something that's not working, so that we can continue doing what we do do well. Palm fronds, that's, it's one of my major issues. I don't really have problems with the rest of it. It's, it's kind of the exception to the rule, but there is no exception to the rule here.
Ms. McClellan, I just, and again, I'm going to speak from my own personal experience over the last couple months. Most of the residents where we picked up the palm fronds, it was a one-off. There wasn't fifty of them sitting there.
No, I, I-
So I don't anticipate our drivers driving by a palm frond-
But Gene, there's nothing in it that says a one-off. That's, that's what I'm concerned about, is, is the wording is that there is no, there's no exception to the rule for the person that's not causing an issue.
Palm fronds are just, you know, they fall from the royal palm.
And for cabbage palms.
It's huge, and it's, yeah, cabbage palms, but you're not getting-
I know.
You're not getting twenty of them at once. You know, now, that, if somebody came and cut down a tree, and cut those, it should be bundled. But the one-offs, I didn't anticipate that they would. If one palm frond is laying there, how do you bundle it?
And, and something that was said earlier was, and something that was said earlier was that if a guy comes, you pay someone to come cut down a tree, that they can put it out. They're not allowed to put it out. If someone comes down and cuts your tree out, they have to haul it away. That's not being enforced. I mean, we have, we have an enforcement problem that's not being followed.
Agreed, agreed. And that, that will solve a significant portion of the issues that we deal with.
But that, on its own, it's going to solve it, because the first time that somebody cuts it down and doesn't bundle it, the next time, they're going to know that the caller has to haul it off.
Right.
So some of that is our education, but somebody-
And I had that down as a question. I think Mr. Perry said it, but maybe he just misquoted. You can still take that cut tree to the curb? Yeah.
For a fee.
For a fee, but it's, that's not just a, that has to be a higher fee, surely.
Well, no, if you, if, if an individual, if Mayor Brown decides he's going to cut a tree, no, he doesn't have it anymore. But, but he, he cuts a tree down in his, in his yard, and wants to put it out at the curb, cut up, call, we'll pick it up for the fee of the sixteen, whatever it is, per cubic yard associated with it.
So we're now offering a service to commercial trees, people, that the city will do it as, as, it goes back to the homeowner. Should, that's just a question, should we, should we be doing that, or should that be the fee that the commercial? It's, it's a good benefit to a, a tree, tree cutter, because, you know, it's easier to walk that thing right to the curb than it is to put it in the back of a truck and haul it out there, so I'm not so sure that cost is-
I don't think we should be doing that.
I'm not so sure that cost-
Let us know, I don't think that's going to be-
I'm not clear what the question is, is-
That, that we're, we're still offering people to take-
For a homeowner.
For a homeowner.
Not a, not a homeowner that does it himself, not a business-
Well, you're never going to know that.
Well, that's what we're going to have to ask them, and-
Well, they're, I wouldn't tell you.
Well, as, as Mr. Roth said, you, you've got people who pull a tree permit to cut down, now, not every tree that gets cut down has to have a tree permit, so-
That's right.
There's, there's a loophole there associated with it.
That's what I'm saying, are we making, we're making a loophole there, or we're just not even solving that problem?
Well, we're halfway to solving the problem, because currently, the way it's been for the past twenty, thirty years, is regardless of what it was, regardless of how big it was, we picked it up and didn't charge you. Regardless of whether it was two guys on the back of a rear loader shoving the stuff into the truck, or a claw truck coming along and picking it up, it was always no charge.
But that's one of the biggest problems I see out there, is these trees that are coming from somewhere, probably not the yard that it's in front of, and you can clearly see that, but who's going to argue that point with the homeowner? And are, are we not offering something we probably shouldn't even be offering? That's my, I, I, I would, I could, I could go either way on this, but I just think that that's a, we're too easy on that.
So if you, well, the, the problem with that is, as a homeowner, you cut a tree down, are we saying you have to take it to the landfill yourself?
No. It, it, you know, but, but again, then we get into proof, where's the stump, where'd it ground it out, you know, it's like, I don't know.
You can obviously tell if a oak tree's been cut, and this is the resident, and we say the little old lady, you know she didn't do it.
Right.
So I mean, that's easy, and, and again, I think, I think we're getting into splitting hairs a little bit with some of it, because we're going to be able to tell ninety percent of the time.
No, no ordinance, no resolution is going to be perfect. It's always going to be a way for somebody to work around it. We're trying to minimize it.
If you could round it out, what percentage of this problem do we, would you say you really see? What's the percentage?
In terms of how many abusers are there?
Yeah.
What do you think? Couple hundred?
Out of-
Sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand.
So we know that problem's going to exist, just got to figure out some way how to-
And, and all we're trying to do is also get around the idea that, you know, we hear from you folks about, we want to clean up the city, we don't want this stuff sitting out there making the city look bad, and we're trying to get to the best methodology to do that, and we think this is one of the ways that we can get there. Because again, I would love for Brian to go back to his office and find out that there are fifteen people lined up waiting to be interviewed, and we end up with a full staff, and I can come back and go, ah, never mind, right? But I don't think we actually should say, never mind. We should change the approach, because as you say, you know, you moved here and said, hey, what's going on? And we have, we have repetition by communities. I get calls from people, even now, and I recognize, you know, the alternate week between yard waste and recycle, they'll call up and say, there are blue cans up and down my street. Oh, I better put my blue can out, and yet, the first person who put it out didn't know it was yard waste week. Okay? And then I get into arguments, I shouldn't say arguments, debates with people about, you know, well, you know, we came out, and we picked it up, you know, we were running late last week, so we picked it up on a Saturday, and now you think something different is going on. And I recognize, all of that provides confusion to the residents, and I'm trying to get to some form of normalcy and frequency.
Can I, can I see that eight hundred thousand dollar slide again? And you explain how that number, you arrived at that number?
This number, this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it.
So-
Twenty twenty, budgeted twenty twenty-two, which is-
Eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Total-
This, this gray bar right here.
That gray bar is eight hundred thousand for salaries and operation, and total cost for recycling only. But are you saying, did I hear you say that recycling also is yard waste? So it's both? It's not. So we're going to save-
Residential garbage, your green bin, that cost-
This is just recycling only, only. Eight hundred thousand. So you're going to save eight hundred thousand?
No, you're not.
Okay, I want to know what you're going to save.
Like I say, the only thing I can tell you for sure that you would save associated with this, because we're going to reallocate the people-
Salaries and benefits are going to be reallocated.
Okay? Trucks are going to be reallocated, fuel's going to be reallocated, all of those are the costs. The only cost that isn't reallocated is how much do you actually dispose of in terms of recycle?
Okay.
And if, in one way or another, you're going to dispose of it.
I agree, but if you just looked, if you just looked at this graph, you said, oh, you got eight hundred thousand dollars, well, it, it, you explained it, that, yeah, you're going to roll that over to others, so it's not.
Right. So you, like I said, we budget currently two hundred thousand dollars annually for[1710.81] for the disposal fee for recycled materials at the facility that we're contracted with.
So yard waste.
Yard waste goes to the landfill.
What's your estimated cost right today, yard waste?
We don't, we don't necessarily track it separately because it's part of the residential rate. I mean, the, the one thing I could get you numbers on is how much we actually pay in terms of a tipping cost associated with the yard waste materials. I don't have that right now, but I'd be happy to provide it to you.
So there is, there is a, 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 a cost. I'm not sure 100,000 would be the number, but because there is a cost.
If, if half of what we recycle now didn't get recycled, that's $100,000, but I'm going to pay $40 a ton for it to take it to the landfill. So maybe it's 50,000 instead of 100,000. So I'm saying somewhere between 15 and 100 would be what I would think you'd say.
Those seven people that now are going to be allocated, the week that they're on recycling are just going to be allocated for yard waste, basically.
So put that slide back.
Yeah, but the other week, those seven people were allocated towards yard waste. So it's not like we have seven people now, seven people here, 14. We only have seven that are just basically washovers.
Are, are doing both functions, okay.
Both functions. So yeah, that's what.
That's what I was getting at. It's like, okay.
And I recognize that it's confusing because again, it's not necessarily seven. Because I've got seven people allotted for recycle, but I may, Brian may have to pull two of them to run on commercial or residential garbage. And we're limited in how many people we have.
Mr. Ralph?
Yeah. And so Jim, did he, um, the, a lot of yard waste, I used to go to like Resource Recovery. Does your, do your trucks go to the county or do they go to, to the private companies that?
Go to private?
We go to Waste World.
Waste World?
Where they, where they, where they tear the stuff up. They have the big tub grinders and everything, correct? Yard waste, yard waste.
On up.
Yard waste.
I saw a lot of it over there on 17th Avenue and 301.
Well, they.
13th Avenue.
13th Avenue.
That was our transfer of station, if you will.
So Councilor, your.
You're going to find a new place.
Your, your question is where, where do our yard waste materials go?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not being dumped in the landfill.
No.
It's being ground up, correct?
No, only a small portion of it goes to the landfill. If it has garbage mixed into it, it will go to the landfill. Most, the majority, 90% of our yard waste goes to Whitfield Road, C R R Recycle. And they have the tub grinder and they do that.
Right. So the point I'm trying to get to is that truly, if we have anything that's being, that's capable of being truly recycled, it's yard waste.
Yes.
Because it's, we grind it up into.
Yes.
Right. The wood, the wood turns into mulch. The, I, I was in this business. The, the, you know, absolutely. You're going to turn it into fuel and you turn it into dirt. You can make dirt out of ground up materials. So.
The pellets get, gets processed, the, the large trees get processed into what they call wood pellets.
Right.
Which, um, uh, energy burners like Jacksonville, City of Jacksonville, they have a, they have a thermo burner that produces electricity and the rest of it gets produced into mulch.
Let me just caveat, this assumes that the, the curbside yard waste is truly green waste. Part of the problem is when you go to pick up the yard waste problems, the chair, the PVC pipe, the steel, the construction debris and the like. And, and that is one of the reasons why we are, you know, trying to differentiate with the bundling concept. Not to say we can't handle it, but when we go out, Brian's people over, over, um, at the property behind Tropicana where we, we put everything, they say, oh, if it's green waste, put it here. If it's construction debris, Greg gets on the deal and moves it with a loader someplace else. The bulk waste. And so that's very time consuming. And, and, and some of, you know, the violations are just that. So it's hard to say or paint with that broader brush that, well, all the yard waste goes to, you know, a good purpose of green waste recycling. If it's, once it's separated, it does theoretically, for sure.
So my, my point, my point being, I'm not done. So my point being is that trying to do something really well. I, I believe that, you know, recycling, we've been doing a long time. We tell people, you know, people are going to recycle, whatever they think, they think everything's recyclable, you know? I'm watching my kids in my home, you know? Everything's recyclable. No, it's not. And, and glass isn't. What's, what's, what's most recyclable? You know, aluminum cans. I mean, you separate it down to like two or three items. Then you really have a recycle, recyclable material. But what we do know, that we do do well, is yard waste. We do know, we live in South Florida where things grow profusely. So we do know that there's a need for that. We do know that, that, that yard waste is, it's completely recyclable if we do it correctly. So rather than doing a bunch of things not well or, or not getting it done because we don't have enough resource, I'm just trying to figure out how to get, how to get us to where we can do what we're doing well. It's still getting done. And, 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 you know, I think our citizens have been very understanding and patient. I mean, I, I think that they've been really, really good about, anything that we tell them we need to do, they're, they're going along with it. And I just want to look out for their interests in this whole process.
And I think one of the other things that we have talked about as a possibility is for that yard waste pile, that perhaps you give a once a year freebie for collection. To, to allow somebody to do it, you know, an annual clearing of their yard and put it out at the property and call, and this is your one freebie. The next one's going to be at a cubic yard cost. That's easily done.
And we educate where we say on, we know when the busiest time is in the summer and you say on this month of June or whatever, you have one time or whatever.
I mean, there's a bunch of ways you could do it.
We have to come up with it because again, that would get education confusing too. Ms. Coker had a.
Yeah. Um, I think I have, like I've said, I've got a lot of concern about passing it the way it is, but I do also know that the definition of insanity, and we are trying to come up with a solution. So I would like, I might be, feel a lot better if there were two things. Uh, maybe a six month, six month review of this after we've gone through it, have a mandatory review. And then also I want to see a plan, a, an education plan that's, you know, putting people out there to the HOA meetings and, and really, because we've talked about, seriously, it's been quite a while since we've said, let's educate people about how to recycle properly. And I've not heard one thing that I've been told any efforts red, we talked about door hangers. I don't know if that was done. Um, so that's, that's where I would be on passing this ordinance.
Well, I actually think though, that Jim and, and his department is going to be reevaluating this as we go forward with the bins and locations and all that to see. And then also the education is something that I know Mr. Perry and through our PIO and, and again, we have done education through the Facebook, through the, and it's been a lot that Jeanie's put out. But unfortunately, I just think that in today's world, people don't see it. It's on the, you know, you put stuff on the cans, you put different things. So I agree that we need to not stop trying.
I don't even mind being part of the solution here because, you know, they, they appreciate it when I come to their HOA meetings. And I think my ward's going to be very concerned about all this. So if I'm given the right materials and the talking points, I am happy to be part of that. I just want to make sure that we're trying to do that.
I believe that's probably, that's number one goal, but like you said, if we keep doing the same thing over and over again, we're never going to get better.
Exactly. Exactly.
Well, I'm wondering now that Ms. Coker has, has brought the points up that she brought up. And one of the comments that I was going to make is we are doing this by resolution, which means we can revisit it at any time. But I might feel more comfortable if we were to postpone looking at this until our meeting on March the 9th, where we could have the education component, a, a draft brought forward to us. As well as when you will be checking into this and getting back to us the dates if you. I'm not sure six months is going to give us a good picture because I think it's going to take probably six months to get the information out where everybody is starting to focus and, and pull, you know, in the same way. But I'm, I'm wondering if tabling this until the March 9th meeting and asking our staff to bring us forward a education plan as well as the date for which we would be circling the wagons again and looking at this.
If I could be heard on that point, I, I have no problem with that. That's actually a pretty good idea. I, I am a little bit, you know, being perfectly transparent, concerned about our public awareness efforts. And I think we implement these things and we go, well, we'll put it on the back of a utility bill. And Lance and I were talking and it's like, we're not sure people read them, frankly. We'll put it on a door hanger. And it's like, what is this? The window cleaner guy? When you get home from work and, you know, you see those things on your door about small businesses, you know? And, and that, there are better vehicles for public awareness. Counsel Coachman was looking at me saying, why not put a vinyl sticker right on that blue bin? I mean, you've got a surface area that's this big with a top that if you had some graphic artwork on the top, yard waste only, um, blue bin, bagged or bundled or whatever we want to put on there. You know, there's a multitude of different things we can do. And I think that we do owe it to the public to basically have that before, you know, the, the cart before the horse type of thing. That we put the horse in front of the cart and have a plan for that. That's a pretty good suggestion. We are coming into a growth season as it relates to the review of the, the plan. I think that's another good suggestion that we review it. I would ask probably that we have it during a seasonal period that gives us both a peak and a non-peak. We're coming into growth season, which will be a peak particularly for yard waste. We've kind of gone through the non-peak of the dormant season, so to speak, and the like. So we got to factor that in, but, but, but I'm on board with what a lot of the comments are being said.
And what I would say is, I personally, I think uniformity in the message is going to be important. And that's why I say, give me something. Give me a, a brochure that I can read from, possibly even pass out at these meetings. Um, because I think uniformity and a clear and consistent message is going to be the most important thing. Because right now there's just so much out there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ralph.
So, uh, bagging, I got a question about yard waste bagging. Because like, I, I know I, I do it and I've seen other people do it where we use cans. We don't put piles out and that's just ridiculous. Someone can pick that up. You put it in a can. We're saying bagging. Well, if you put stuff in a plastic bag, you're putting organic material in a plastic bag, you've just contaminated your organic material. So is it, are you not going to take anything that's not in a blue can? Or are you still going to take cans that are still full of clean, organic material?
I think the way, the way it was worded was our preference would be that the containers be wheeled. Cause the idea is for, to speed the process of being able to efficiently collect things. Our guys would wheel the container over to the back of the truck, put it on the tipper. The tipper tips it up, puts it down and away they go. Versus somebody who puts, I don't know, 400 pounds of sod in a, in a container that doesn't have wheels and you got to drag it across and then pray to Jesus you don't break your back trying to pick it up and dump it into the truck.
So that's, that's the exception to the rule. I'm still asking about like leaves. We're, we're at that time of year right now where the leaves drop.
Yeah.
So I, you put them into a can. The can dumps easily. It doesn't, it doesn't weigh anything because it's just full of leaves. Is that not going to be, or do we have to stick them in a plastic bag, which now we've just contaminated organic material with plastic?
No.
I'm just trying to figure out how is it going to work?
Our intent is container, can, bundle.
Okay, but not just.
And we're just saying because we're, we're going to repurpose the blue can, it's a 65 gallon container that you can fill up and we can, we can easily roll it to the yard.
And I love that idea. I will, I will use the heck out of it, but there'll be times when I'll have other cans out there too.
Understood.
It's, it's a good thing. And other cities charge for this service, 15, 20 dollars a month. A lot of people don't do it because they don't want to pay that fee. So you, you put your bulk items in the bottom, the tree trunks, and then you put the leaves over top of it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Just teasing. I'm just teasing.
Now we have a big easily rolled up bin.
I'm just, I'm just teasing. Yeah, you say, oh, it's leaves. I can't drag it over. I understand.
All right. So is there a mo, Ms. Barnaby?
Um, just two things. I have seen the containers with the leaves. And if they get full of water, they're not as easy to get rid of as you think, number one. Number two, I know that there are some individuals that are using reusable containers. So we will need to make sure that our staff is trained to recognize what's a reusable container. Cause I had somebody say, I had my, and they took everything. And it's like, well, we're operating in almost emergency conditions. They're trying to get everything done. They just took everything. So at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, and, and I didn't make the motion before because once you make a tabling motion, there's no discussion. So at this time, I'd like to offer a motion to table Resolution 22-9, modifications to recycling yard waste collection procedures until our next meeting, which will be on Wednesday, March the 9th.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yeah.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I would really appreciate having the homeowners associations and the different groups that we serve get in touch with us so that we can share this information with them and get some of their ideas and what they would like to see as well.
And I think that that's something also that, um, through our police department visits, probably more HOAs than anybody else. So maybe we can get some educational material to them as well. Because you may find an HOA that's willing to put a dumpster in their HOA. And I know that could add to the cost of having more dumpsters around. But if, they would be more responsible, I think, and also making sure it happens. Cause most of the HOAs do have.
The dumpsters are about 24, $150 a piece, something like that. So it's not an exorbitant cost if, if it became really popular for us to put out.
Cause we still, we still, and I think I've heard everybody up here as well as our staff, we still want to be the good stewards of recycling. It's just how we do it, different methodologies. So thank you very much.
Couple of questions.
Yep.
So are we saying that we'll convert the blue bin to, uh, yard waste? What if, what if a homeowner has a smaller private can their owns that they've been putting out? Which sometimes are they allowed only one, two, five?
No, I, I think our intent is it's in one of those three methodologies that they're putting it out. Whether it's a bin, a bag or a contain, or bundled for us to be able to pick it up. You know, we go out, some, you know, I, I, I raked my backyard. I got two live oaks in my backyard and I've got six bags of yard waste sitting in my backyard waiting for me to put it in.
So we're not limited to just one. That, that was one question. The other question is like for an example, I know Braden Castle has their own yard waste allegedly, uh, roll off or. So we're not going to charge additional for, uh, the citizens. Are they going to get what? Are they, because they.
I don't believe that would.
They're not charged now, are they? Are they? If they're not charged now, that's my question. If they're not charged now, fine, there's no charge.
It wouldn't change.
Okay. So if a community wants that or HOA wants all just one central location, they can do that. But then of course they'd have.
The benefit to the yard waste is we're now going to supply them with a can to use, make it easier for pickup as well as picking up any other bagged, bundled or other cans picked up as well and easier.
Is that every, is that every week?
Oh, yeah. It's going to go to every week then.
It's going to go to.
Be more consistent.
Be going to every week. So we're going to pick up trash and yard waste every week.
That's our goal.
Okay, well.
And, and, and we're still going to, so if, if someone puts out an occasional palm frond, they're going to be, that's going to be picked up or is it going to be a special pickup?
I do, I, I would say palm fronds are ultimately going to be picked up.
This is where we get in trouble.
It is, it's, it's very interesting because having gone out and done this, if it was bundled or bagged, we grabbed it, it was in the trailer, we were gone. When we had to use the pitchforks and the rakes and, and everything else, that was when we got into spending 15 and 20 and 30 minutes at one home. Multiply that by all the homes in Bradenton.
Okay. A question for our attorney. Uh, we did this resolution in December. So, I'm sorry?
Yeah, December 21.
December 21st, we did this resolution. So I've already sent him an email a day ago and he probably was curious of why I was asking this question. Do we have to repeal that and then resubmit it? Or, and then the second part of the question is, uh, this has rate structures in there. I don't know if we changed them. And that has a requirement, does it not, to notify the public in advance? Resolutions.
There were no changes to the rates. It was all just, the way I approached it was to modify the one resolution that we had related to solid waste, which talks about garbage, recycle, commercial, all of that in one place, including the rates. So I modified that in December as it relates to the, um, what we did before. Then I just took it again and modified it again. And I had highlighted in yellow where I had changed or deleted things.
But we did change rates in December. Should.
Not on solid waste.
Yeah, we actually lowered them.
Oh, for bulk items. Yes, you're correct. I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
But, but, uh, I'm just making sure that we're not, you know, somebody doesn't challenge us on, we did a rate structure. I didn't know about, I don't know how you complain about getting a lower rate, but somebody might.
Yeah, I mean, this is a repeal and replace of the entire solid waste rate structure. So, and you'll see language at the end that says it repeals and place, replaces resolutions in conflict. So it was intended to be a complete.
Yeah.
So it should incorporate, if there was a prior rate adjustment that was done, that should be incorporated into this.
All right.
Valid question.
Thank you very much. Great discussion. Any unfinished business? Mr. Perry?
Just briefly, um, I, I think we circulated the council budget letter to. letter to several councillors for signature, I took the liberty of drafting that, and I didn't wanna be presumptuous, but I know that there's, that council itself doesn't have resources to do that, so, it's for our budget book, and there's basically an overview of what the budget contains. I circulated that, one of the councillors wanted to speak with me, and I appreciate that, which I'll get with that councillor. If you haven't seen it yet, or haven't signed it, if you could take a peek at it, it's rather aspirational about what we try to do with our budget for the city, as relates to the city's needs, goals, and objectives, and the like, so that'll be going around. It will be published shortly thereafter online. The delay was related to ADA requirements, we had to get a contractor to basically put it in ADA format once it is posted online, or otherwise distribute it. And so, that's why it's September, and of course, we, I'm sorry, it's February, and we passed the budget in September, but we'll be finalizing that, getting it circulated, and if you have any questions, please just reach out to me, or let me know to come by, and I'll talk to you about the letter, sir.
A question. So, that's for next budget year, not this current?
No, it's actually for this budget year.
So, we're doing, okay, and basically, what does the letter do?
Typically, every budget that's submitted by a local government will have a letter from the governing body itself, sometimes the governing body and the mayor, sometimes the governing body, the body of the mayor, the city manager, city administrator, and the like. It basically tells what the budget was attempting to do, and you know, the high points of the budget, it's a fairly short letter. And I think you probably read it, I'd heard, Cory told me this morning that you had read it, and just wanted to talk to me about it. Again, it's aspirational, it talks about some of the challenges, as well as some of the accomplishments and things like that.
But it doesn't pin any council person down to, wait a minute, you read it, you approved it, hey, sorry, buddy, you signed this letter?
No, I don't think that, that the letter does that in any way.
Right, yeah, you already had a right to change it, and you didn't do it, and you signed it, so it's a done deal. Because I always have the right to change, if I find something that's not right in the budget, which I look at all the time, to see if we're complying, or see if we're ahead of budget.
Right, well, you don't have that right, I don't have that right, the council as a whole has the right to do budget modification, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely, but I, you know, that doesn't eliminate that budget modification, if I sign it, it says, hey, it's done deal.
That's correct, within certain reasons, if there was bond covenants, things like that, legally, you may or may not be able to, if there was a representation regarding certain funding sources, but that's kinda hybrid-type stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I may want more clarification on that.
Well, just like if you did have a GEO bond, that was an Ad Valorem type bond, and you passed the budget that had the the funding to pay the debt service on the bond, and then you changed the budget, and said, we're not paying our bonds anymore, I'd imagine we'd probably be sued. That's kinda what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but I don't want you to come up to me later and say, well, you signed this, so I, that gave me a thought.
No, I'd come up and say, I'd say the council passed the budget, and I have to go with the budget, irrespective of what any one single individual councillor did.
Right, but I still have the right to question anything-
Absolutely.
-last year's budget, and bring it out and say, hey, I didn't realize-
Yes, sir.
-that this was in there, I mean, the budget's that thick, you know?
Sure.
And, and, so, but now that we're talking about budgets, I'd like to, I'm asking you, I think you've agreed, that we do a better budgeting process, rather than at the eleventh hour, thirty days before September, and and if council doesn't wanna do that, that's fine, I'd like, I'd like to have that so more detailed, and I like the presentations by each department, and, you know, a question and answer session, whether anybody else wants to do it, may I do it, if nobody else wants to do it, that's fine, I'd like to do it with you and department heads, prior to adoption of that budget in September.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Was this something that was sent to everybody?
I'm sorry?
Was this sent to everybody?
I believe it was.
Okay.
A while back, I'm told.
It was, it might have been through an email, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it was initially.
Yeah, I looked at it, and I thought, mm.
Cory can probably address that, Ms. Fortin?
Oh, oh, November, okay. Okay.
Alright, anything else, Mr. Perry, unfinished business?
Uh, no.
Moving on, council reports, starting Ward Four.
Oh, here we go. Okay. I've had problems since I've been here about contracts, documents, agreements, you name it, that come before the council at the last minute, or the last couple of days, and I haven't had time to read them. Sometimes they're presented just during the council meeting. So, I would like to have a policy vote on this. So, I'm proposing a motion that all contracts, agreements, and/or documents to be voted on by the city council shall be presented at a minimum of seven days prior, or in advance of the voting of the item, and be moved to the next regular meeting.
Can I comment?
There's a motion on the floor, let's see if it-
Did you understand it, Brett?
I don't know that it needs to be seven days, I mean, what?
Okay, how many days, I mean, that I would agree that-
Don't we have a rule where anything on the agenda comes out the Thursday before the Wednesday meeting?
It does, but it comes out at like four-thirty, so you basically lost Thursday. So, you've got one working day of Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, so you've got three working days, if you count the weekend, it's five days. I don't know, some people, when it comes to five o'clock Friday, they go to their, you know, wherever.
I mean, I think, I think that-
It should be timely enough that you have time to read it.
Well, I think that Thursday does that, but I do know that, that stuff show up after that, and that's not-
Then you have to move it to the next meeting.
Well, okay, so, I mean, so if you wanna amend your motion where it-
I'll amend the motion that, if we comply with the Thursday, that any document, anything we're gonna vote on, it has a document, a contract, any type of a document, agreement, anything that's presented, we have to have the opportunity to read it, along with that approval of that agenda that's Thursday at four-thirty.
I don't think that anything, since I've been a mayor, has popped up that's a surprise thing on a Monday, sometimes, even like today, a lot of times, there's CRA stuff that comes on that we don't have the full documentation till Friday. There's other stuff from staff members, planning, different things, it's not trying to hide anything, it's just when some of the documentation gets done, and I think one of the biggest things that this will slow down is, it's gonna slow down people trying to get, they're gonna have to wait another two weeks, then in June and July, they may have to wait another whole month, November and December, they may have to wait another whole month because of our, the meeting schedule, so I don't think there's anything, I agree with you on some things that are major projects, but some of the little stuff, the staff is still trying to compile to help the citizen out to get it on there.
Well, I can tell you two recent examples. One, when I had eye surgery, a document was handed to me the morning of, and I said, number one, I can't see to read it, so I tabled it. The next meeting, Mrs. Barnaby tabled the same thing, because it hadn't been reviewed by the, our city attorney, so we tabled this thing out probably a couple of times. Those are the things, examples, I'm talking about. I'm talking about stuff that's, you know, if we wanna, well, it's just, it's just a protocol that's fair to me, I think, and others, that we can get an opportunity to review stuff before we make a vote on it.
And that's the benefit of tabling something also.
Well, yeah, but I don't wanna have to table, it should be a policy that these things, these documents are given to me in time to read them, because some of them are development agreements, some of them, you know, are contracts that are multiple pages, and I may wanna talk to the city attorney, I may wanna talk to the administrator, I may wanna, you know, review this, and kinda sleep on it, you know? And if you don't give it to me timely, I can't do that.
Ms. Barnaby?
I understand what, what I believe Mr. Sanders is saying, however, let me also offer something that I did in the past, and I'm looking around, and I I've pretty much told every department head, if you want me to vote in the affirmative on something, don't hand it to me the day of a council meeting, because you're getting an automatic no from me, because it's coming up at that point in time. I think if our department heads and our staff understand that we need to have this information in a timely fashion, I think that that helps it, however, you have said in the past that you're a businessman, and that you're business-friendly. And sometimes, I think, doing these, these kinda hard, fast arbitrary rules in the sand, if it has, is it, if it doesn't hit my desk a week before the meeting, you know, you can't bring it forward, is not beneficial to our community. I mean, there's times that, yes, I've come down on a Thursday to pick my stuff up, so that I know that I have it. Or I come down, if I'm out of, out of the office on that Thursday, I come down on that Friday, or even that Saturday. And I have found that when I do that, and if I have questions, and I reach out on that Monday, most of our staff do everything they can to get that information that I'm requesting to me.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I was pretty much about the same way, I completely agree with the sentiment. I just don't like tying our hands like that, because sometimes things do come up, and, and like it did, and you were able to table it, and it worked. So, I think, I agree with the sentiment, I just don't really wanna see it that hard and fast that we can't use our own judgment, sometimes some things have to be pushed through. That's all I'm saying.
Was the motion for contracts, I mean, because that, I-
I said, contracts, agreements, and/or documents to be voted on, in other words, you come up with a a resolution that refers to a document that's not present at the time, and we should wait till we've seen it, because we don't have the full picture, I don't have the full picture. You know, and I want an opportunity to get the full picture, not only that, I wanna be able to vet it, I might wanna be able to vet it with the council, and or, not council, but our councillor and administrator, and I just think that, and some of these deals are major, big deals. I mean, I've seen a couple million-dollar deals that haven't had documentation in advance that I could read it, and if you wanna go to the record, I'll be glad to go back and pull it out for you, because it's it's major dollars, and those things are the most concerning to me, but I don't know why you would not want transparency in that.
I don't think that's what we're saying.
And I think that, that's why you have five people that vote on it.
Well, then, we vote on this, I mean, I haven't got a second yet, so this is, if I don't get a second, then it's dead, so, you know.
Alright, motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, anything else?
Oh, I have one more motion, we'll see if this one gets killed, too. Motion two. Any citizen comment may be addressed by the council, mayor, or city administrator after presentation to obtain a clearly, and clarity in proposed action to be to the citizen. I've seen citizens come in here and says, I want this done, that done, blah, 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 and I say, well, wait a minute, I sat here three minutes, you didn't even answer me. That's disrespectful, I think, to that citizen, to come in here, and then they say, well, nobody called me back. Okay, I think as a councilman, I have the right to ask a question if I have clarity on what they're asking for. And two, I may wanna direct through the vote of the council to a particular department to look into that, and report back to the council to make sure that these citizen comments are being heard and acted upon, not just heard and nothing happened, so, I know that that's been stopped by, that they just have three minutes to move on, and if you got, you know, a hundred people out there, you I understand the delay process, you can't, you can't give everybody, you can't question everything, but we haven't had that problem since I've been here, so, I just ask that we have it, that anybody that presents us with a problem, because that's what we're here for, the people. If we're not, then I have a real problem with, that I can't ask somebody a question right after they've made a comment that our police department is in violation, or our trash hasn't been picked up, or whatever the case might be. I think I have, I'm a representative of the city, and I think I should have the opportunity to address that individual as a representative of the citizens that are bringing that problem to us.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, and I don't disagree with most of that, and we do have a resolution now that's still out there, Twenty-one-oh-two, and it talks about our policies and protocol, protocol related to conduct of a council person, and it's, if you look at the public meeting hearing protocol, goes through, obviously, the mayor will open the meeting and agenda through that, and then it does say, council members should withhold comment during the public hearing portion of the meeting till the conclusion of the public presentation. Council should refrain from arguing, debating with presenters during a public hearing, should always show respect for different points of view. And that's kinda what we're under right now, obviously, if we wanna go through all of these procedures and change, I would have no issues talking about that.
I agree.
And, but it is something that is approved right now, and the the part of it that is, is what we don't wanna do, and we've seen it in other governments as well as ours, sometimes when you get into a debate at that time-
I'm not asking about debate, I'm just asking simple questions, yeah.
Right, but what I mean, though, is, we, like, you heard today, a person said something, I said, please refer to Chief Gere to talk with them, another person had come in and said something, please talk with Chief-
But I also heard that they come back and said, nobody called them, and so, like, wait a minute, then I should have the opportunity to say, alright, why did nobody call you back? I don't have a clue, maybe they're not telling the truth, or maybe it needs to be, okay, wait a minute, this is the second time you've been here, first time you said, nobody's calling you back, nobody's emailing you, blah, 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 I wanna have that citizen heard, because it sounds like they're not being heard, and if I can't speak out, then I'm not representing them well. So, I would ask that we repeal that Twenty-one-oh-two, and revisit any issue that's in that Twenty-one-oh-two. That, and I, you can do it as a separate motion, or do it combined in this motion?
Well, I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna look at that, because, to be honest, Mr. Sanders, I I don't know when the policy changed to where we weren't allowed to talk to citizens, but the entire time I've been in office-
It was in Twenty-one-oh-two, he just read it to you.
So, and, and that wasn't called out, maybe it's pointed out or being enforced now, but that's not, that's not anything that I ever, I don't know that I did.
Whatever.
But I don't know.
It's rep, public record, it's a resolution, I done checked it out.
Okay, well, I-
We agreed to the resolution, I didn't, I didn't, I'll be quite honest with you, I didn't read all the details, and I'm not happy about it, and I'd like to repeal it.
Well, I don't know that I can repeal it right now, but
Sure you can.
I thought we were gonna, well-
We are.
I thought we were gonna workshop it.
Sure, you can repeal it.
Under my comments.
All you need is a second, and you go vote for it.
Okay, so, and, and, and just so you know, I do believe the council has the ability to, when a citizen comes here and talks to the council, they're not coming here to talk to you, just, I mean, some people are, but some people wanna come to talk to the entire council, and it's the council's decision, and I believe that we have the right to address the citizens if we feel so inclined, so-
Obviously, you've seen, the whole time I've been here, and we have talked, but sometimes when, when an individual is getting attacked up here, you want them to speak their three minutes, then address the situation as we go forward.
Right.
Right, so, but, so, I mean, again, I'm going by a resolution that was passed last year, that it was five to zero, resolution that all the people-
Is that the code of conduct deal?
Yes, yes, so it's all in there.
So, and to be honest, you know, I don't think, I did not interpret it to be that, that, and we've, because we've had that, we've had this code of conduct for a long time, and it's never, we've never had a policy where council's not allowed to address a citizen comment. We've never-
They're allowed to, it's just that you should, and I let you, I ain't gonna let you talk with them.
But I say, as the organizer of the meeting, it says right here, the mayor, you know, runs the integrity of the meeting, I'd let Mr. Roth talk.
You've seen it where, sometimes you wanna talk, sometimes you don't, that's on you.
I, absolutely, absolutely, but I don't like, because I, you know, I've let it go, or say, well, you can't, I, that's just not-
I didn't say you can't, I said, normally, we don't at this time.
Okay.
I never stopped anybody, and I let you talk the last time it happened, I haven't had anybody ask lately to talk at the, at the other comments, so, you know, it's about the decorum of the meeting, it's a business meeting, it's about what we're doing at that time, it's about procedure, and one person on this council doesn't set procedure, it's five, and the vote goes the way it goes, and I've always been about openness, and that's one of the things, again, you've been here, you and I've been here longer than anybody at this time, obviously, Ms. Barnaby's back with the break, but, but it's there, you know, I believe we engage the citizens, I believe I'm getting attacked for things that I'm not doing, and if any of you think differently, please talk to me as well as that, you know, because we are addressing things. Is there different ways to address them? Yes, but is there ways to work through it?
And, Mr. Brown, I'm not, I'm not even speaking about the, some of the obvious problems, but, you know, when a citizen comes in, and they wanna address the council, I feel that it's almost disrespectful to not engage. This is my, is my take on it.
Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Mayor, I think that we really do need to have a workshop, and you-
And you may have had that as part of your report, and if I'm preempting you, I apologize. But I think having a workshop to discuss these issues are very important. And I think it's also going to be very important that we hear from our attorney as to when we have citizen comments and how we choose to engage with citizen comments because you can be opening the city up for liability. And there is absolutely nothing preventing a councilperson from getting one of the cards, seeing the information, contacting the citizen directly and say, "You had three minutes at the meeting. You said there was something more you wanted to share. Do you want to tell me what it is?" You can do that as a councilperson. You can contact any citizen directly. But I think that in the interest of having a well-thought-out policy that we're going to adhere to, it's going to be important that we have a workshop. And I think it's going to be very important to hear from our attorney as to when we engage that can open the city up for liability. That's an important issue to consider because we answer to 58,000 residents, not just the one or two that come in front of us.
Well, my comment to that is that I'm not so sure we should individually talk to... We had a lady come in here and accuse us of ADA violation. And I'm not so sure I want to talk to her about that.
Well, you don't have to.
I think we can't, you said that's the way I could talk to her?
I said, "It's a choice that you could, you could choose to do it if you wanted to."
If I did that, but that's, that's, that's up to me, I guess, you know, I have to control my own behavior. But I don't know why we're discussing this. I have a motion. If it doesn't get a second, let's move on.
A motion to repeal the whole ethics thing?
A motion to repeal 21-02, and then the other motion was to, and you can hold that off if you want to just revisit 21-02.
I was under the assumption we're gonna do that.
We're gonna do that?
Yeah.
We're gonna repeal this?
Well, we're gonna talk about it at a workshop.
No, I'm asking, my motion is to repeal 21-02. I need a second. And then we can vote, otherwise we move on. Okay, if you don't want to do it, then fine.
Motion dies because of a lack of a second. Thank you.
All right, good.
Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you. Nothing really to report, just since the last meeting, you know, continue to get comments from citizens about the cleanliness of the city and illegal dumping and so forth. And public safety and those, but those are things that I can get with the different department heads and we can put our heads together and give it some thought. But Ward Five is still alive.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Yes, okay, a couple things. First off, I just went to our quarterly Sarasota Bay Estuary Program meeting. It was, it's a great meeting. I apologize, I don't have all my notes with me, so I'm going from memory. But we met out at Longboat Key and the water, I mean, looking at, being there at the water, seeing some of the, I mean, the clarity in the water. So some of the things that are being done actually are working. They have a big oyster bed project out there that I think made the water just so much nicer. There is a lot of money that is getting put into this program. I believe it was over $900,000 that's being put into it by the federal government that we don't even have to match. The way the program works, we each put money into it, each of the different, we've got the city, the county, Longboat Key, Sarasota, and I think, I don't know if it's the beaches. I don't think, I don't think Anna Maria is included in that. But anyhow, there's quite a bit of money that is going to go into the projects. And we have had some discussion. Myra and I sit on this board and I really think it would behoove us to have someone from Public Works because I think it's really more geared towards some of the stormwater management projects and things like that. I know it's been discussed. I don't know the proper way to have that done. Nothing against Myra whatsoever, but I think, I always feel like I'm missing Public Works in the discussions there. And I actually told them with them planning these projects, I'd really like them to get with our Public Works or with Mr. Perry because we've got some great plans for infrastructure. And I think we could probably even make it better with what they have to offer. And they are also being used by a lot of the, a lot of the, I don't know the right word, the proceeds that are coming out of these lawsuits. The monies are being put to the Estuary Board to put, now, those are earmarked for the places where those funds were from. But it's just something to keep in mind as a tool. And I'd really like to see us somehow bring Public Works on board. I guess, Mr. Perry, we can work with you on that. But that, there was a discussion. They did ask for a vote of confidence. That's something that in the past, they really haven't been doing, every, but like a five-year review. I went ahead and voted in favor of it and they were put in favor for five years. There was a lot, there was also a discussion made about the funds and how much they were holding in reserves. And it really made sense to go down to just a six-month reserve because it is a federal program. And if for some reason there's a disruption, that money would go back to the federal government rather than stay here. So we felt like the reserves could get us through a temporary problem like we had before to run the staff and salaries and all. But we went down to a six-month reserve is where we're at. There was discussion about the additional funds that are coming from the federal government into that program are going to enable us to possibly speed up our stormwater project over at GT Bray. That's the city and county government. So, you know, that's all good news. Though there is a promising study at UF now about Red Tide. So a lot of good things are going on over there. I wish I had a better, my notes with me so I could give you a better report, but I just wanted to update you on that. Also wanted to, if you weren't over in Ward One, you might not have realized we had this little event over there, which I would just want to give, you know, shout out to Public Works and law enforcement, everybody, because that was a big event, shutting down 59th Street, draining the water tower. It was quite a big event and I want to just give them a shout out. They got it done. I think it was one or two days tops, one and a half days of the road being closed because that was a major, a major problem, one and a quarter. It was a major problem for me anyway, but a lot of people, I think. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McCollum, can I ask you to come up for a second, please? Because, no, no, it's all good. Councilwoman Coker brought it up, the almost catastrophic event that occurred at 59th Street. And as I understand it, it was because Comcast had a subcontractor doing directional drilling. It was not a failure of our water main. It was not...
It was not a break of the water main. It was, a directional driller was in the process of installing fiber optic cables along the west side of 59th Street at the intersection of 29th Avenue, right across from Fire Station Three. They went underneath our water main and nicked the bottom of the pipe. The fact that they've nicked the bottom of the pipe rather than drilled through it is the only thing that saved the entire intersection from being destroyed. So if you go out there right now, you'll see two small patches in the pavement, one of which was a result of us having to install an insert-a-valve in order to shut off the flow on the east side of 59th Street. The existing valves were not closing fully, and so we couldn't shut off the flow. So the water was going out of the bottom of the pipe and kind of blew out. And as a result, it undermined the concrete pole that was supporting the mast cable for the signals at 59th Street. So the signals ended up in the water. The pole ended up leaning on the power line. The PED signal was taken out. And everything was put back in place and operational. We were, I was notified at 9:30 in the morning, the day that the driller hit the pipe. And by 5:00 the next day, the intersection was back open and everything was functional. So the only thing left to do the next day was some curb work that didn't require anything to be shut down.
And if you would please, as I, we had this conversation, are we sending a bill?
Oh, you betcha.
I can address that as well. I contacted Mr. Parks and asked to speak with someone at Comcast and not the person that delivers the newspaper to the C-suite. I got the construction services director's email yesterday. I think I'm gonna have to go a little bit higher up the chain, so to speak. One of the issues, as far as the question, Tim Parks for Risk Management, I told him to put an all-inclusive bill together because I was out at that site six times, basically, in a 24-hour period, start when I left the CCRA meeting on the east side and I was out there that night. And we must have had probably 20, 30 people from Public Works out there. The on-call contractor that actually did the repair, that has the specialty expertise and the resources to do it, luckily, was doing some work for Jim in a different part of the city. So he was able to mobilize quickly. There was two or three excavators that he had on site, loaders, lots of heavy equipment, lots of personnel and the like. And they did a miraculous job. But as Jim's pointed out, there was all these other indirect things that were occurring to make it the perfect storm. And you had pointed out as well, Counselor, and I think each of those is compensable, including the 250,000 gallons of water that are in that tank that drained up.
500,000.
500,000, yeah, that are in the tank that was right across the street. Potential loss of businesses for all those appointments in the professional plazas that had to be, which are obviously private. But this isn't going to be, "We'll just pay for our time." It's going to be an expensive claim. And I'll probably be speaking with Mr. Rudisell potentially to assert legal claims against Comcast and their contractors for doing that. What really, really kind of irked me was after talking to Buzz, who runs that crew out there for the construction company that did the repairs, he had told me the night before, and Jim had told me, he goes, "Watch what happens because when they went out there right immediately after, guess who wasn't there? The driller that pierced the pipe and everything." And then talking to Buzz, he said, "Well, the drillers were here this morning. They sent some supervisors and some insurance agents over and they were speaking about that the city misspotted the location of the underground utility and that's why they ruptured the pipe." And I said, "Really?" And he said, "I got really good pictures." Yep, and after they scraped it, the spot lines were there. He showed me some of the pictures. The spots were spot on, literally, on where the underground utility was. They just let the bit get too far and get too wide and did what it did. The depth of that was probably, what, close to five?
It was like, probably to the bottom of the pipe was five and a half.
Yeah, five, five and a half feet and the like. So in answer to the question, it's going to be a very expensive claim for Comcast's driller. They can argue amongst themselves whether it's the driller, Comcast, the permit company, the spotting company, whoever. But I do intend to seek full compensation for all direct and indirect compensable damages on the claim.
Well, and this is not the first time that we've had an issue with this company, is it not?
Well, I'm not sure if it was the same drilling company or not. I wouldn't...
I think, I think what you have to understand is that, there's a couple of things going on. The first thing is, we had a meeting with Mr. Rudisell who kind of educated us on the advent, or I should say, the recent developments in the telecommunications act, which really prohibits a city from getting into much detailed questioning regarding the permits that are issued, so to speak, the ability to charge for it and the like. And the thinking, I'm assuming, is because the state in their infinite wisdom said, "We need broadband. We need telecom. We need broadband around the state. We can't let local municipalities slow that down." And so we're very restrictive in what we can do in that regard. That's a big problem. And so, so you got that going on. And then in addition, you got all the other things with, they just, there's a separate contractor, whether it's Verizon or Comcast or all the major telecommunications companies. They don't have Verizon on the side of their trucks. It's the drilling company. It's, and then there's a separate company that actually pulls the permit. So does the tail know what the dog's doing? A lot of times, I don't think Comcast has a clue. They basically put together a budget, give it to a project manager and say, "Go ahead, get it done. Permit, do whatever you got to do." And I think they've made a conscious decision to just drill. And if you got to pay for it, if you pierce something, well, I guess we'll have to pay. That's what insurance is for.
Does that negate their liability by doing the third-party contractor? Because I know that's a typical MO with other areas that they contract, they contract to the sub, the sub, and then it's like, "Okay, it's his fault." And he says, "Fine, I'll file bankruptcy."
Yeah, I mean, those are kind of complex legal questions that Mr. Rudisell is probably better acquainted with Florida law to answer. But generally speaking, I'd say no.
Who did the locates?
We don't know. A separate company. Well, we, we...
We locate our utility.
Yeah, we, ours, but in that, in that hole and in that area, who else? You had county?
You had the county, you had TECO, you had private irrigation lines, you had...
DOT might be in there?
You had, I don't know if you had DOT, but you had Manatee County Electrical for the signalization. It was telecommunications. It would look like spaghetti.
I got a picture of it. What you'd see in the picture is six different pieces of conduit, all having different utility in it. Plumbing, electrical, fiber, you name it, yep.
And adding to the difficulty of it is the right-of-way use permit that issued for it is a Manatee County right-of-way use issue. So Manatee County is the one who controls 59th Street, so they're the one who issued it. So when I called my counterpart at Public Works to say, "Hey, in case somebody hadn't called you yet, your mast arm, you know, your signals are down in the road." I think the exact words were, "Yeah, that's how our road, right? I probably, we probably permitted that idiot." You know, so...
Do we have same issues with this new Verizon 5G that's going in?
Everywhere, everywhere. And all they want us to do is just give them a permit, give me a permit, get out of my way, get out of my way. And I made the point to Mr. Perry when we were standing there, I'm like, "Just remember, we've got somebody else who wants to put another line going from the Panhandle down to Miami and they want us to get out of the way. It's these people who are causing the problem."
County's having the same issue as we are.
Everybody, everybody is. There's a lot of underground fiber going. And when you see one of those big coils on the side of the road that are orange, about that wide, that's what that is. That's conduit for fiber. See them all over.
We actually had the argument with them because on Manatee Avenue last year, and I've seen it since, they're pulling multiple cables at the same time. And they're pulling three different color conduits, including blue, green. And we're like, "Wait a minute, if blue and green, that's water and wastewater, then there's no law." There's no law that prevents them from putting in multiple colors like that. So if you dig it up, you have no idea that it's conduit versus waterline or sewer.
Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, sir. You know, we've had a lot of discussions up here about what is working well with the city, what isn't working well with the city, what we need to do, what we can do, what should we do. But I think it's important that we send a message to our staff because we have individuals that have worked very, very hard under some very difficult circumstances, particularly when we had, everything was shut down. And we had individuals that worked from home while they could. We had individuals that came in and worked to make sure that the city functioned under difficult circumstances. And I think that it's important that we say thank you, that we do recognize how difficult it can be to get things done these days. It seems to take longer than ever before and we can't get the equipment we need to or we can't, we can't hire enough people. And I am concerned about burning some of our individuals out that are, that truly care about the city and show up and work so hard for us. So I just would like to give our staffs a shout out and say, "We are seeing it" and that we appreciate what you all do. The other thing is, had the opportunity to go to the Rotary Comedy Club event at the... at, uh, the, um, Manatee Performing Arts Center, and it was nice to be able to support the organization that continues to support us as far as what they've done with their, uh, their donations to help us with our, our Lewis Park. And, uh, if, if you wanna know the, the quality of the people that, that we had as, as entertainers, uh, the headliner was a gentleman named Jeff Allen, and you can Google him and find him, uh, all over the internet, and he was, he was very, very funny. It, it, you know, laughter does a heart good, and, and I think that, uh, the cardiologist took a hit that night because there were a lot of people laughing and their heart was doing good. Also, um, I wanted to announce that, and, and this is, I've, I've spoken with Mr. Roth about this because this is indeed in, in Mr. Roth's ward. Uh, however, I am an alumnus of Ballard Elementary School, and this year, they are going to be celebrating their one-hundredth anniversary of educating children in our community. And I am working with them to help them with their gala, as well as, we have a project, we would like to donate one-hundred books to their school library. So, if you would like to make a donation, let me know. I have the list of books that the librarian has suggested. I will also take, um, cash donations to purchase books and put your name in them, uh, if you want to, to do that, just let me know. It's, it's hard to think that, and, and before somebody gets cute, "No, I was not in the first graduating class." Wasn't in the second either.
Well, I thought there was a motion, never mind.
Oh, yes. So... We've had a lot of individuals come...
I only got a second.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Y'all, y'all, I'm, I'm gonna look at you like my mama would in church, y'all, now you need to behave. We've had a lot of people that have come through Ballard Elementary that have, um, made a big difference in this community, and I think it should be celebrated. I know that there's, um, one of the reasons that the Service Club of Manatee County even exists, it's one of the oldest ser, women's service organizations, uh, in Bradenton, they got started by making sandwiches and delivering sandwiches to children at Ballard during the Depression when kids didn't have money for food and their parents couldn't send them to school with a lunch. And when I think about all of the good that, that Service Club has done, but they got started serving kids at Ballard. So, I'm, as you can tell, I'm pretty passionate about this. I would love to have your all's support, um, speak with me. I've got, the, the, the principal is, is Rudy Kieser, the assistant principal is Dr. Katie Fradley, and Mary Olivia, um, or Oliva, I said her name wrong, I apologize. If you wanna help, let me know. And thank you, Mr. R.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll do a challenge. What's your challenge? Challenge, for some books. Challenge the rest of my council to match me.
Are you serious?
I'm serious. Hundred dollars.
Hundred-dollar bill?
I'm challenging all y'all, I won't embarrass you, but challenging all of you.
She just handed me a hundred-dollar bill.
Mr. Roth?
The, um, the mat, uh, I went to buy the mat the other day...
Now, this is something I can second, sorry. I'm sorry, I'll behave.
Um, drove by, went down Fourteenth the other day, and, and the mat is, uh, going to a whole nother level of, uh, of construction right now. Looks like they're getting ready to plant something in there for a March eighteenth birthday, so I think we'll make that. Uh, I was gonna ask, have, uh, planning, have, have we, uh, has there been any, um, research or, or work towards the tree board?
Um, we're still looking for appointments. As far as I'm aware, I think we only have two members currently.
Okay. So, you are, you are working towards it?
Yeah, I mean, to the degree we can. I know Myra's been talking to people, trying to talk 'em into applying for the board, um, but, uh, if anybody knows of anybody that, that would be interested in being appointed to that board, um, we're, we're ready and, and willing and...
Okay.
...to take it up.
That's, that's all. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and just going on that, playing off that a little bit, if you have any people, send them to me, because that's what we're looking for, we're looking for people, and that's always been something, and they meet the criteria of going down it, so...
I think we need to revisit these boards and, uh, requirements to appoint, and because we got, I've, uh, witnessed some things in the planning board that I didn't realize was going on, that, uh, people not, uh, attending. I know we have tree board that's been baking for two years, affordable housing board, we can't get anybody, so we're not, these boards are not being, they're not functional. And I think that some of the problem is because it's, uh, we were maybe too restrictive on some of the appointments, and sometimes we, uh, don't require them to come present to us so they don't feel that they're important. So, I think we need to address that at some point, future point in time, as to how we appoint, the, the rules of, of bylaws, some of them are old. The planning board is two thousand and eight, is fourteen years old, is like, for the most part, it looked pretty good, quite frankly, but I was surprised. But there's some other things in there that, that they're, they're not doing, and we need to address it, in my personal opinion, but that's, you know, I just had two motions declined, so maybe my opinion doesn't matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, and a lot of those boards, I think are, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, some of the positioning and the people that have to be on them are dictated by certain policy or state statute and different things.
Right, the, I mean, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, that one is, is done by statute, uh, their requirements for who can be on that board, but a lot of them are set by either ordinance or, or resolution of the council.
So, we can, we can add that to our list of workshops. And like I said all along, in all my time, let's have a workshop every day for eight hours. I'm open to that, other than council meetings, so... All right, um, just going through, first, I'd like to, uh, I know several of us on the dais and as well as staff members attended a grand opening of Kefi, right down by, off of, uh, Sixth and, uh, Main Street there, which was a great event, and I've actually, I made a challenge, and I'll make it here, that if everyone in this room told ten people about it, and they told ten, that it would make a downtown business successful. And I have had lunch, and I swung by this morning for a little breakfast sandwich that was unbelievable. So, you know, if you're, you're out there, it was a great opening, uh, you know, obviously, um, if you know the proprietor at it, her family's been in the Greek business for a long time in this town of Demetrius, and now she's taking it over, she's starting her own, so it was a great event, great attendance, and I think it's gonna be something very fun for our downtown. And one of the things that it does do is it starts a little farther out, just from the immediate Main Street, to start to stretch towards Village of the Arts. So, that's again, where I think when we have our city-county meeting, some of those connectivity things are gonna be important, and I think we need our partners to work through that, so that's part of it. Obviously, you know, we've got some great schools in the city, um, Ballard's celebrating its hundredth year, um, is, is exciting to see, and you don't see a lot of schools that have been around that long time that hasn't changed that much from the standpoint of their neighborhood, and that's great to see. Obviously, down the street, we have Manatee High School, and it's, and it's one-hundred-and-tenth year, so, you know, we've got a lot of history in our city that we need to keep building on and, and going through. And then, yes, I did have on, I had two things on my agenda to bring up. One of them was obviously going through our, uh, community assignments for each board member, council member, you know, we've got all of you listed out. If you'd like to, we, we'll talk about it at the workshop, or if you wanted to send, you know, the, what you represent for the city, um, and just looking through it, if there's any others that we know of, or, you know, where you are. If you wanna get off something, if somebody else wants to get on it, just let me know, and we can look that out. I believe last year, and from what I heard, was one of the first times you ever asked where you wanted to sit in a long time, and, and, you know, so it's where you wanna be, so we can get the most effectiveness for the city. And then also, um, obviously, Resolution twenty-one oh-two was right here in my hand, gonna talk about it, that we need to, to work through it and, uh, talk through the workshops and go through it, 'cause like Mr. Rudisell said, if we have Resolution twenty-two dash whatever, it'll supersede the one before it, so, um, I believe we need to work through it, but we also need to have the respect of, of each other in the public meetings and go through things, and then go through the policy of what we do. Obviously, we're seeing some things come up in this meeting, early in citizen comment that we have, through the mayor's office, we have answered every email that's come in, you know, whether it's public records email, whether it's, it's different ways. Some, some things, you know, through, you saw two of us up here got accused of something today through the HUD Housing, that, you know, we all know that is not true, but when lawsuits are threatened in that, sometimes you have to watch what you say or do. Um, and, and I have reached out to every person, whether by email or by phone, you know, at times, and if, if they don't respond to you, and if they don't get the answer that they want, then you're a bad person. And sometimes you have to, you know, look in the mirror too at yourself, and, you know, one of the things I've said all along is, I do this because I wanna be a better, um, make a better community and be a steward of our community, and we have done it, and there has been an investigation into some of the allegations, and the chief has sent emails out to those individuals, and if they wanna go farther, the FDLE is out there, they're more than welcome to, to go the next step. And, you know, we believe that everything we've done is above board and, and will continue to do that. So, you know, is it frustrating at times? Yes, but we're here for the good of our citizens, and we're gonna continue to do that. So, thank you, Mr. Sanders.
By the charter, the, uh, council has to be informed of, of these, uh, incidences that happen to the community, and so could we have copy of the correspondence to those individuals making the complaints? Uh, and, and the other question is, maybe you don't wanna answer it yet, now, but you can answer it later, this threat of ADA compliance is, uh, what, what, Mr. Perry, do we, are we out of compliance?
I'd have to get the specifics, I was just informed of the complaint, I think it was a day or two ago. You know, ADA is a very broad federal law that deals with employing people, it deals with capital, it deals with programs and the like, and half the problem is that when allegations are made, they're kinda just thrown against the wall and not very specific, and so I, I really have to hone down on that a little bit and get with Mr. Rudisell and company. I'm not sure which, which...
Well, there's been a lot of threats with emails that, that's been going on for the last week or two, of, of filing complaints and, and suit with ADA because we're not in compliance with whatever the request was, and then it's been, it was done more vocally today with a lot of pictures taken, so that's the reason I don't, uh, respond to it, because I don't wanna get us in worse shape by saying something I shouldn't say.
Yeah.
So, that's why I was called out, which is fine, that's good, may, I might have saved us a million bucks. But, uh, again, is, 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 is their complaint valid?
Well, let me, let me just say this, I mean, it, there's, if, if we're talking about the emails that we all get... There were several ADA, you know, components that, we look at ADA issues in, um, our public services and things that we're doing on a regular basis. I don't see anything in those emails that gave me any concern that we were violating the ADA, so I'll say that.
Wasn't it addressing when we were doing construction? I thought that's what they were talking about.
Well, we did look at that at the time when that issue was raised, yes, that was...
But I didn't hear what she said.
No, part of the, part of what was raised as a concern was something about, at a meeting, that there wasn't, that there was construction going on, and that there weren't, like, the normal public accesses weren't open, or, or something along those lines. I remember that being brought up at one point.
But that was twenty-one eighteen, and I believe that was all...
Right, probably two years ago.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I, and we're probably, I assume we're ADA compliant on this building entrance and ingress, the, uh, and what about, uh, our, our system of, of, uh, like, Mr. Jones said that he has to have email, I mean, is he asking for, I mean, you know, if, if he has a, a, if he's blind, uh, he has a right to have, uh, a different, uh, form which he can request, is he accurate?
Well, we'll start with, Mr. Jones doesn't have a right to have the mayor respond to him generally. Keep in mind that his complaints about having to get stuff in writing, A, were made here while he was standing before you, having, uh, you know, putting those comments and, and hearing your comments. So, no, I, I don't think that that, I don't think that that's a legitimate request. And it's been on the record before, and I think he said again today, that the reason he's asking for that is either because he doesn't trust what he's hearing, or I think he said today that he wants to be able to keep track, it helps him catalog his comments, so no, I don't think it's a valid ADA, uh, request.
And also, all of his requests in those emails have been answered. They're, they've been answered by our, um, by Bill, you know, when he asked for public records, documentations have all been answered, as well as I have a minute and twenty-three second conversation, uh, voicemail from Mr. Jones asking me to call him back, which I did. So, we have all the documentation that we're keeping, and, um, obviously, you know there's a lot of innuendos going out that, that just aren't, and that's, that's something that I think is a great thing to remember as we go through our code of conduct and do our policies of how you answer things and do it, because that was one of the things that, that he complained about, well, you let this one do it, but you don't do, and you're not answering this, and you're not answering that, so you gotta think about what comes back legally, and that's why when we get that meeting, Mr. Rudisell, and maybe have some, some, uh, policies, if you look at, look at the school board policy, look at the county policy, and go through and, and try to really, and again, this is a business meeting, trying to get things done, but also answering the citizens, because with the communication that we have, there is no time that a citizen doesn't get an email, that doesn't get a response of some sort, it may not be directly from me, but it may be directly from the attorney, it may be directly from the chiefs, it may be directly, because as soon as those emails come in, seven-twenty-four, if it's an emergency, it's answered right away, if it's something that we can wait till Monday, and that's one of the things I believe, that if we don't have to bother our staff on the weekend, 'cause sometimes they're on vacation, sometimes they're in places that, that, you know, unless it's an emergency, our staff should be left alone on the weekend, and that's important, because I don't believe, you know, if it's, it can help a citizen, then yes, but if it's just, questions that can wait till the Monday or after the holiday, please do it. All right, so we will work on that, um, and yes, Mrs. Barnaby, the Rotary Club event was very funny, but I think it was probably the first joke that started it off and really went down the right road, so maybe. Right, Chief? Okay, go, moving on to, uh, department heads, I see the chief standing up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, I'll try to be brief, I've kinda held off on a couple of things for the past few weeks, 'cause the meetings have gone long, but I wanna get just a few minutes, I promise I'll be less than five. I'll need to follow-up on that comment about by charter, I'm required to something, because whatever you said, I'm not aware of, so I'll need to get with you when it comes to processing of complaints. We handle complaints all day, every day. You know, they fall into different categories, you know, as last year, we instituted a civilian advisory committee, they routinely review our complaints, and, um, in light of Mr. Jones' repeated appearances here with his most recent complaint surrounding, um, an allegation of misconduct by my assistant chief and one of my captains, saying that, you know, they admitted to him, they lied, I personally investigated that and sent him some correspondence on that on Friday. I decided to send that to you today, you just probably hit your email, and so, please...
That's what I was referring to, I didn't see any response, he, he accused officers of lying to him, and he said he asked multiple times to have it in writing that, and I don't blame him for the writing part, but to address that, and that's what's in the charter, that any, uh, possible indiscretions from officers are, should be reported, uh, to the council. That's in the charter.
So, I, I let you all know about all complaints we receive?
Can you, can you get that informa, tell us where you found that in the charter?
Yeah, 'cause we'll need to figure out how that...
Well, you can, I didn't know it was gonna come up, but it, it does says that the, the, the mayor is actually to do it with you in concert to tell us of any indiscretions or... mayor is actually to do it with you in concert, to tell us of any indiscretions or noncompliance of officers at council, I mean, I can get it out and.
Yeah, at the appropriate time, and again, we'll research that.
We can figure out.
And all that, but, and that's what, you know, with the report coming out, and again, I asked the chief, I've obviously repeated things that kept getting said, we've been working through that since that came up, and there's an appropriate time, I believe, to bring it up, after he had it, obviously, we know Mr. Jones doesn't always, you know, even when, when you find out the facts, if they don't meet his narrative, it's there, you know.
Exactly.
And that's, again, there was a court case that Mr. Jones said some things and lost the court case, and, you know, went through it, so you win and lose some things, and when, once the jury has spoken, you've got to move forward, and that's what we're trying to do without the, you know, negativeness to our city. So, go ahead, Chief, thank you.
Absolutely, and I think it was just a two-page summary, and so you'll find that attachment, I think maybe that'll walk you through a little bit of his ongoing complaint and make, make you understand that, help you understand that a little bit better, and as you know, anytime there's a very significant disciplinary matter with the police department, I've always brought that to your attention. That doesn't necessarily rise to it, but because he appears here routinely, I thought it necessary as well. I had made a comment to you all a few weeks ago in light of Betty Lou Rhodes' appearance, that her niece had had some adverse engagement with some of our officers, I told you that I would initiate an inquiry on that, because I took that as an oral complaint. We actually were able to get ahold of her, and that was resolved without any complaint on her part as to the actions of the officers, and again, it's just logged as an inquiry, these are all available for public record as soon as they're over, much like I told the gentleman in the back, he started asking questions, I said, we will get to the bottom of everything, and as soon as it's over, we'll release it and then be available for questions, so just to reassure you that we do look into these, sometimes even I have to look into these things myself.
And Chief, on that note, we obviously, and it was mentioned earlier, that the body cams prove a lot of stuff, so when a citizen doesn't want to meet with you with a body cam, that's a red flag in my mind.
It certainly can be, they have, you know, been a little bit of a game changer when it comes to investigating these incidents, and it's, it's oftentimes all about perspective, it doesn't mean anybody's right or wrong, it's just different perspectives, and at the moment, I wanted to mention as to the homeowners' meetings, the community meetings, we have a list of those, I think you all have access, and if somebody from Jim Shop wants access to those lists of meetings, we routinely get in there and change them if they're canceled or whatnot, to get out and spread the word about the garbage and recycling, really about anything, they're available, we'll give somebody access, and we always like company there, we usually start the meetings, and then we're, we're asked to leave so they can do their business, and then.
Would it be a good idea to invite, and I've asked you about this before, to invite the councilperson for that board or that it's in, to, to ask them, they don't have to, I mean, it's such, it's their prerogative to, but I would like to be involved in anything, it's in my war, because I get a lot of these questions after the fact, and I, you know, I'll sit there and take, they can take the shots at me if they want, that's fine.
I believe you all have access to that list.
Yeah, but we have access to a lot of stuff, it's hard to get sometimes.
Where is that list? I, I didn't know about it, I know some of mine that have reached out to me.
I will get Mike T. to send that, the information on that, and you can get on there, you can see what, what we go by, we try to reach out and keep it active and make sure, sometimes they cancel them for the summer, sometimes they say, we're not invited, because they've got other stuff, and so that'll all be on there, and then it's at your discretion which ones you want to go to. We try to go, we try to at least go for a few minutes to all of them to let them know what's going on, it's been, it was my guarantee when I showed up here a few years ago.
Can't we just have an invite get, sent to us?
Thing is, is it's, the HOA would have to invite you.
Yeah, that's right, 'cause I don't even know who's going on what night, and so, you know, maybe if somebody from the city wants to do that.
I think if you look at the list, you could, I've reached out to the president of Village Green, and she's thrilled, and she keeps me apprised to when their meetings are.
We, what we can promise is that we will, we will keep it updated, you know, I know, we look at it each week and say, is there any changes, is there any, so. You know, I always try to remind you all about what folks at VPD are doing, and the good things they do, and the hard job that they do, sometimes people don't realize, you know, Bradenton's a friendly city, our crime isn't out of control, that, you know, we're not doing the extraordinary out there, so I'm gonna read this to you, it's just a short report. This is, was authored at my request, after looking at the body camera footage by Officer Sergnano. We swore her in just last year, probably stands about, yay tall, newer officer, quite a, quite a young lady, I think she's about 23 years old. Says on 1/29/22, at 0:22 hours, I was traveling northbound on US 41 heading home from an off-duty detail. I observed debris in the southbound lanes of US 41 North, which appeared, which appeared to be a vehicle crash had occurred, I pulled over to ensure all parties were medically okay. As I approached the 4500 block of US 41 North in Palmetto, I observed a female lane in the middle of the roadway in the southbound lanes. I used my BPD-marked vehicle to block off southbound traffic, I notified BPD dispatch of my location, they observed injuries of the two subjects found laying in the roadway. I rendered aid to the female, who appeared to be in her 40s. I observed her left leg was amputated from the knee and was bleeding profusely. I applied my BPD tourniquet near her hip to stop the bleeding. The female had a weak pulse, which I began to take off the three layers of jacket she was wearing before performing chest compressions. After two compressions, the female gasped for air and became semi-alert. I then observed a male subject in his late 40s near the west curb laying on his right side, I went to check for signs of life with no pulse detected. I moved him on his back, at which time, a weak pulse was found, his left leg was dislocated and had protruding fractures. I took off his belt from around his waist to make an ad hoc tourniquet to prevent him from bleeding out from his leg injuries. I observed the top lip of his skull was cracked and was bleeding, and I applied some pressure to stop further blood loss. The male then stopped breathing, began to make grooveling sounds, which he eventually stopped, as I performed chest compressions to clear his airway. BFD arrived on scene, took over medical care, I observed a loaded Glock magazine underneath the male, but did not find the handgun, MSO and FHP arrived on scene. On 2/1/22, I was notified by Manatee paramedics that the male subject did not survive while being transported, however, the female subject did. This officer returned to work at 2 o'clock the next day. In answer to your question, yes, she'll be receiving a life-saving award, but I just couldn't think of a better way to remind you what, what these folks are out there doing day in and day out. Great training, great response, didn't hesitate, and I'm pretty proud of her, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any other department heads? Mr. Rudicell, anything further? Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
All right, the only thing I had forgot to mention in mind, and I checked with Mr. Rudicell, but the Board of Commissioners is having a retreat on February 26th for the Housing Authority, so, I mean, I'm assuming that all their board members will be there, I did ask Genie to notice this meeting, if there's gonna be more than one councilperson, or I may attend for a while, and again, it's, their board is under public sunshine laws and rules, and, you know, I mean, it's not something that I think the city or any of us is trying to hide, it's important to get the information out, and I do believe, and we've said this before, and, you know, when appointments come up, I think our boards are working for that with the two appointments we've put on there in the last year, because there seems to be a little bit more accountability at times, and hopefully that can continue, and also, you know, that board is, is hopefully gonna keep working in a positive light, so.
I want to make sure that that is a, that we don't violate our Housing Authority, I don't know if that is a public meeting, it's a retreat with the board and executive director, and I was invited only because I'm a representative of Bradenton, so I don't know that that is a public meeting, so I wouldn't want to step on their toes by doing that, I think we need to find that out first before we, now, if more than one of us is gonna go, yes, we got to, you know, I'm an advocate for, for doing that, so we would, but that's the only notice we need to get. I'm not so sure that, you know, that they're gonna want a crowd of people, I'm not sure this is a public, and maybe it has to be, I don't know, but.
Look, I'm not their legal counsel, but I'm not aware of any exceptions, that board is certainly subject to the sunshine law.
I would agree.
All right, hearing nothing further, we'll be adjourned, thank you.